Folks out there in Internet land who are watching this video. We are 30 minutes in advance of our Rochester City School Board business meeting. And we are starting this early because we have an award to give out. The I Believe Award, which is one of two awards that our board president initiated some years back now. The I Believe Award identifies generally an individual student who has has excelled in some way, turned their academic career around, or otherwise really achieved something significant in their academic life. And in recognizing that student, we asked the student to recognize a significant contributor to their success. So it's a kind of a passing it forward scenario where, you know, we accept our accolades and then, and we accolades in return. So with that introduction, I was given the honor of seeing this award ceremony because the recognition is going to a student at the Henry Hudson School 28, which is one of my liaison schools. The student recipient is Jayla Morrison. And on behalf of the Register Board of Education, we're proud to present the I Believe Award to Jayla and her teacher, who she's identified as Angela Bolze. Is that a silent name or pronounced?
Bolza, yeah.
Thank you for correcting me.
That's okay.
So Jayla has made significant gains academically despite being home for remote learning for over the past five months. Ms. Bolze has supported Jayla by supplying materials throughout the shutdown, creating a schedule that worked for Jayla, and staying in contact with Jayla to ensure she received all the necessary services. Upon Jayla's return back to school on January 5th, it was evident that not only had Jayla improved academically, but her communication skills improved as well. We applaud Ms. Bolze for providing outstanding student support to Jayla's academic success. Please join me in recognizing Jayla and Bolze with, I don't know, let's see if we can all find the hand clapping symbol on our Zoom meeting. There we go, a little celebration. Jayla, I would love for you to tell us a little bit about yourself and how you feel about recognizing this award. And then tell us a little bit about your relationship with Ms. Bolze. Can you do that?
Mom's gonna help us out with that, right Ms. Washington?
Say hi.
Say hi.
This is Jayla's mom. Jayla is partially non-verbal, so she's not gonna be able to speak what she really feels. So I'm gonna speak for her. And Jayla is at Henry Hudson School. And she is, her teacher is Ms. Bolze. And she is amazing. Jayla has, is doing like really good. Ms. Bolze has been amazing with Jayla. She has autism, Jayla's in the ASD program. So it's definitely more difficult than the typical child. And Jayla has made so many strides due to the hard work, of her hard work and of her teachers' hard work. And I'm just very proud of her. It was really, really extremely rough in the beginning. I used to run around, I did speak to the board about this, run around with the iPad trying to get her to learn. And she just finally, something just clicked. And it was, it's working as best as it could in the situation that we were in. But we're definitely glad to be back in school. And she has made a lot of great strides.
That's terrific. What grade is she, what grade are you in?
She's in the fifth grade, say, fifth grade.
Fifth grade.
Jayla, we are so glad to meet you. And we really appreciate your mom for being such a great advocate for you. Do you wanna introduce Ms. Bolze? Do you just wanna say her name for us?
I love Ms. Bolze.
I miss Bolze.
I love you.
Ms. Bolze, tell us a little bit about your experience with this whole, you know, COVID and reopening with the
Oh, okay. Well, you know, when this started back in March, which seems like a lifetime ago. But, you know, we didn't quite know what to do. And we learned very quickly how we were gonna support our students, which is a little bit different given the needs of the kids in our, we're a 614 autism program. So we service children who have the most severe need in the district. Jayla has just done amazing. And I've gotta give a lot of credit to her mother, Ms. Washington, who is just, she's a leader as a parent and really helped our other parents advocate for their kids too. I work with an amazing team at 28 School. Speech therapist Ms. Patterson and my TA and my parent professionals are OTPT. And Ms. Ladd, who's led us through this new world of teaching with amazing leadership. So coming back was, has been excellent. It's been going really, really well. It's going really well at 28 School. So we're very excited. I'm very proud of Jayla. Jayla's really grown into, Jayla's using her voice so much more to participate in her own learning, which is, I've been with Jayla for, it's been a year and a half now, right Clara? It's been a year and a half.
Yes, yes.
That too has been a real positive thing to be able to loop with the class. So we've all been together through this ride. And to see where Jayla has come in a year and a half, she didn't really use her voice very much last year. And she wasn't really participating as much in her own learning. And now she's just grown and blossomed. And it's become more about her taking initiative and being excited about her work and participating rather than just complying, which is not the goal. We want her to be an active participant. And it's just been fantastic. I couldn't be more proud of Jayla. Hi Jayla.
And I see the principal of School 28 is with us. And this recognition is really a whole school, you know, whole student, whole community experience. Would you like to share something about the journey of School 28 through this whole COVID environment?
Sure. Thank you for having us and for recognizing Ms. Bolze and Jayla and Jayla's mom. Because this is a whole team effort, especially in the autism program. So we have seven autism classes. And Angela is the chair for all the ASD teachers. So anything that we need to roll out, we roll out with Ms. Bolze. And then she shares it with the team. And she has led her team to do some amazing work during the COVID experience and then supporting the reopening so that we were so successful reopening. So our autism teachers delivered materials to kids every Wednesday to make sure they had the hands-on materials that they needed. And they did this all throughout the entire time we've been home. So it's really been a blessing to have them willing to go out into the community and share with the kids what they needed to be so successful while we were remote. And then to lead her team into reopening our program so successfully. So we went through all our safety precautions. And you have to understand that our students are not one that we can mandate wearing a mask all day, right? Our kids are where they are and we meet them where they are. But my staff under Angela has accepted that. We have extra PPE, so everybody is competent and able to support the kids to the best of their ability. And the kids are really shining. So we've really done well in this, you know, COVID as best we can. We know, from the first time I heard Ms. Washington speak to the board, my heart ached. And then I started going to CPAC so that I could let them know that I was here to support them. Because I can't imagine the work that they went through from March all the way until January, having their kids at home requiring the amount of work that we do with our kids at home every single day, no respite, right? So our parents have been huge in this. So, you know, we're just glad to be back. Phase one went well and we're ready for phase two and phase three. So thank you, congratulations to Ms. Bolze, to Ms. Washington, and of course to Jayla, who did all the hard work, right?
Yes, she did.
In just a moment, I'm going to ask if our superintendent has any comment. But let me tell our audience that we have four board members that I can see present. Commissioner Ricardo Adams, Commissioner Bill Clark, and Commissioner Amy Malloy are the faces I saw. Oh, and Commissioner LeBron is online. I see your face now too. So, and the remaining two commissioners, Commissioner Elliott and our vice president and Commissioner White, who is our board president, have obligations in the political process of trying to get elected to, in Commissioner Elliott's case, get re-elected to the school board. And in Commissioner White's case, seeking the boards, or seeking the community's support for judgeship. So they would be here if they could, I'm sure. So Superintendent Mary Smalls, would you like to say a few closing words?
Sure, Commissioner Powell, thank you so much. I think over the past few moments, you have seen the power of a principal working with a teacher who works with a student and her family. And so I have to say that on January 5th, I was in that classroom with Ms. Bolze. And it was, when I spoke right after that and said there was so much significant joy, this is one of the examples that I'm speaking with. The power of having in-person learning and knowing that some of our students certainly do have their struggles. And to certainly hear that although there were some challenges and hoops that we needed to overcome, that our teachers and other staff really rose to the occasion and made it happen. Because the bottom line, it is about our students. So Ms. Bolze and Jayla and Ms. Ladd and Jayla's mom, thank you for working together in partnership to move forward. And I can't tell you how much my heart is singing right now to see this again. And how amazing it was to see it on January 5th when Jayla was in class, learning with her peers. Thank you, Commissioner Powell.
Unless any of my colleagues would like to say a word or two?
Yes, I would like to just say, Jayla really has a strong advocate in Claire Washington, her moms, man. The lady seen me in Walmart and said, "No, I don't care how busy you is. You need to talk to me right now. I need to talk with you." And we basically started a relationship between getting me to advocate, and help her advocate, and her mother. You are so... You're such, you keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams, for that testimonial. Well, that concludes this award ceremony. And our regular board business meeting will start in 15 minutes.
Thank you.
I see you tomorrow, Jayla. Bye Clara.
Good evening. This is the Rochester Board of Education January 21st Business Meeting. We want to welcome you to our meeting. We want to just have you to listen, and if you have comments, please share your comments. We hope this is going to be a pretty robust meeting. President White will not be with us this evening, and so I am your chair for the evening. So, welcome to the Rochester Board of Education meeting. The first item on the agenda is an act of reverence and pledge of allegiance to the flag. So, I will sort of say that, and then we'll move on to the acceptance of minutes. So, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the January 4th, 2021 minutes?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Got a second? Thank you. Okay, I understand. That's what I've missed, Callie, the speakers list. So, we have four individuals that want to speak before the board. So, I'm going to have Callie to call the names.
Commissioner Elliott, since you did get a motion second on those minutes, we might want to tidy that up, even though it's out of order.
Yeah, you see, I'm moving real fast. No problem. Thank you, Commissioner Powell. So, can I get a motion for approval of those minutes?
Some of, I think you already have a motion.
I mean, we just got to all vote.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Powell. So, could you begin our speakers portion, Callie, by calling the first name?
Yes, I will. So, we have with us, our first speaker is Jack Pelz. He is a parent, and he will be speaking about in-person education for 7th through 12th graders. Mr. Pelz, welcome. You have three minutes.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I appreciate your time. My message is really geared to Dr. Mar Small's, and specifically, it focuses on two pieces. One is accountability, and the other is an aspirational request. First, I believe that there needs to be some accountability for the original survey that went out regarding online instruction or in-person instruction. It took a newspaper article, many parents to complain. In addition to a high schooler being quoted in the DNC chastising the lamentable format of the survey, I think, to force a turn in terms of what the plan was. There still is a lack of transparency as to what exactly led to that turn. The second piece is around sort of an aspirational request. And I want to say, Dr. Mar Small, I most respect you for coming into a district. You knew what you were getting into, and you chose, and that's a really courageous choice. The request is that, in thinking about the pandemic and in thinking about how challenging it has been for Monroe County, for us as a nation, certainly as a state, one piece that Governor Cuomo has done is that he said regular briefings regarding how the state is addressing COVID. Well, I think you can think of the crisis of the pandemic in terms of our state, in terms of our county, similar to the crisis that our district is in. And to that regard, my request would be to create a set of short-term public goals. Something that could be in the form of a blog. It could be something that we as public can see. What are you specifically working on month to month, three months to three months, year to year? So that we might be able to see, one, how you're rating your own progress, but, two, so that we might also be able to follow and be able to rate your progress. And I don't want to do this without the hope that you might also enlist us to help you. To the extent that this could be a public blog or a public format, you might be able to create a wish list. What is it that you need from us as parents who care deeply about this district, who want you to succeed? And to the extent that you could publicly and transparently put out there, what is it you are trying to accomplish and how you are trying to get there would be greatly appreciated. So, with that, I'll save my time, and I really appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pelz.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Pelz. We do appreciate you addressing the board tonight. And if you have any additional written comments, you may submit them to the email or you sign up to speak. All right?
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Joining us is the next parent, Mary Star Polley, who will be speaking about reopening schools. Mr. Polley, are you there? Okay, I'm going to move right along here. Our next parent joining us, or sorry, this will be a community member, is Mr. Peter Birkin, a community member who will be addressing the board regarding eradicating bullying. Mr. Birkin? No, doesn't seem to be with us tonight.
Yes, hi, this is Peter Birkin.
Okay, Mr. Birkin, go ahead. Thank you. Welcome, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Hello, Board Superintendents. My name is Peter Birkin, and I'm a bully-proof expert. I am the antithesis of, what do you got there? Jane Elliott, who's very much into the brown-blue eye situation, instead of seeing everyone created equally. I am congruent in an alignment feeling and accepting of restorative justices. I'm definitely congruent with that. I help frustrated and overwhelmed public schools who want to eradicate bullying so we can increase attendance, which means increase government funding and graduation rates. I am a life coach, passion test facilitator, and mastery of self-love trainer. And I am a consultant, which means I have solutions to many of the problems. I just prepared a four-page document that will be ready for anybody who requests it by email. My email is P. Birkin, B-U-R-K-I-N, at gmail dot com. And I'd like to also invite everyone to an event that I'm having on February 13th, 2021. That will be from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. It will be an eight-hour course in Eastern Standard Time. And what we're going to do is I'm going to administer the passion test as well as the mastery of self-love course. So, it'll be a full eight-hour day. The community, if you put in your email free slash peace, and I'll make sure you get the Zoom link. I teach a four-step process adapted from John Asraf to eliminate fears and limiting beliefs. The first thing is acknowledge and be aware that you have a limiting belief or fear. Two is angle. Look at all the different angles at the perspective, or AKA, also known as reframing it. Three is abolish it. And four is arsenal. Use every tool, skill, resource, process to rewire your brain. Babies, kids, download everything they see and hear. Ninety-five percent of our subconscious mind is this programmed from the past, zero to seven years old. For 400 years, Jesuit priests kind of joked that if we got the kid from zero to seven, we would show how they would turn out as a man or lady. I'll be a man because they're Jesuit priests, for the most part. Examples of limiting beliefs are, "I'm not good enough," "You're a bad kid," or "You are worthless," etc. Programming, that is, rich people are rich, and that poor people stay poor, is really a simple thing when it comes to programming. God or your higher power of your understanding made each and every one of us co-creators in the uniqueness and likeness of your higher power. I call the miracle bliss zone, the ever-present precious moment in now.
Mr. Birkin?
Yes?
I do apologize. Your three minutes are up tonight, but we do encourage you to submit your comments via email as well.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you for joining us.
You're welcome.
All right, I'm going to circle back around because I do have a Ms. Star Polley with us tonight. And she's a parent, as a reminder, and will be addressing the board regarding reopening of schools. Ms. Star Polley, you have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. Okay?
We can hear you now.
Good. Yes, my name is Mary Star Polley, and I'm an R C S D parent. If you're a parent, teacher, administrator, or student in the district, the last 10 months have been an absolute roller coaster. And I believe it didn't need to be such a wild ride. Regular, clear communication from the district would have gone a long way to reduce the extreme anxiety, the swirling rumors, and confusion that we've all experienced. Parents shouldn't be left to wonder and translate incomplete and contradictory information or turn to social media for answers. Teachers shouldn't be finding out from the local media that the district has changed course again, and they will need to return to buildings. Principals shouldn't be hearing the latest reopening plans at a board committee meeting along with everyone else. Information is the antidote to anxiety and rumors, and this district administration has so far absolutely failed at keeping everyone adequately informed. As we continue on this pandemic journey, I ask the district to place communication as the highest priority, provide regular, clear updates to all stakeholders, involve teachers, parents, and students in the decision-making going forward. The decisions will be better ones, and the district will not find the need to abruptly reverse course because they discover obvious roadblocks that were missed because the people who would be implementing the plans were not consulted. The second thing I want to say with my time is that while I was a strong advocate for getting our kids back into school, and I'm grateful this is finally happening, I also understand why our teachers are extremely wary and anxious about their safety. During normal, non-pandemic times, they have not always been given the adequate resources they need to do their jobs. They're often kept in the dark by this district, forced to work in unsafe conditions, or expected to make do at the classroom level. It seems to me there are two things that if the district can find a way to implement before we return to school would protect our teachers and put everyone's minds at ease. Number one, testing every person before they enter an R C S D building so we're assured that COVID is not also walking through the doors. And number two, get every single teacher vaccinated as soon as humanly possible. I know the vaccine shortage makes this really challenging, but finding creative ways to partner with the healthcare systems, maybe we can find a way to find the supply that's needed for every single teacher. I know everyone in the district has the best intentions and is working so hard. All of you are working so hard. I just urge you to focus on the two most important things during this time: communication and safety. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, Ms. Star Polley. Vice President Elliott, that does complete our speaking portion of this evening.
So, Callie, couldn't you just let the public know how they can sign up to speak at a board meeting?
Yes, of course. So, if you are a member of the public and would like to address the board in our board meetings or special meetings, feel free to, oh, actually, before I do that, it does seem like we have a Mr. McCabe with us. Mr. McCabe is a staff member and is going to be joining us to comment on reopening of schools as well, Vice President Elliott.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mr. McCabe. Mr. McCabe, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Hi, everybody. I'm going to talk fast because I got a lot to say, but I'm a living environment teacher at Franklin Upper. Here tonight with respect to describe how disheartened and panicked I am that the district is unilaterally making an abrupt decision to bring students and teachers back into schools at the demonstrable height of the pandemic with nothing more than a basic framework of a plan for safety. Listening to data being cited about how safe schools are is misleading, to say the least. In fact, based on the New York State Living Environment curriculum, we as teachers are asked and tasked with teaching students to identify bias and cherry picking of data to reach conclusions. For example, the curriculum states standard 3.4B claims should be questioned if the data are based on samples that are very small, biased, were inadequately controlled, or if conclusions are based on faulty, incomplete, or misleading use of numbers, end quote. It also states 3.4C, claims should be questioned if fact and opinion are intermingled, if adequate evidence is not cited, or if the conclusions do not follow logically from the evidence given, end quote. The following statement is a perfect example of a claim I could use my students to find and interpret potentially misleading information that come to a biased conclusion. Quote, "We have heard from students, parents, teachers, and staff who want our schools open, and we have data from our medical professionals indicating that schools are safe," end quote. Based on that, these are some questions I'd ask or expect to be asked in my class. What percent of students, parents, and teachers, the participants, agree with this plan? Is it a majority? Are data even being provided for you to interpret? Are there data from other medical professionals with competing claims about school safety? Might there be any bias from the person or institution making the claim? Aside from the, end quote, aside from the fact that 89% of district educators are against the current reopening plan, there are close to zero data to compare to this moment in the pandemic or even our country's history. Forty-four hundred Americans died yesterday, 21,000 this week, and there are 1.35 million new cases as of the past seven days, according to the CDC. We're still breaking various records almost a year into the pandemic. Now, we face a new variant of a virus that is significantly more transmissible, a variant we have little data on. For each new person infected, 10 to 100 million new opportunities are there for the virus to mutate with potentially deadly results. A new virus could emerge at any time and anywhere. Healthcare workers recently spoke with Evan Dawson on WXXI about how our healthcare system is on a precipice. I made the decision to speak tonight because now we're playing with the lives of several teachers, staff, many more teachers, staff, and students. Of course, it's detrimental being home. The data show that. But what would, excuse me, the data can't show are the unknown and long-term effects of this year-old virus and the effects of the new variants as they continue to evolve in the millions of new people infected each week. I truly understand the situation where there's no end on any side, but the district with an open reputation for disorder and failure and a lack of communication, I believe we are finally in the hands of competent and forward-thinking superintendent as her decisions have kept thousands of people. Obviously, we might be wrong. For the sake of everybody in the district, please come up with a coherent plan that addresses in detail a safe reopening.
Thank you, Mr. McCabe. I appreciate you joining us this evening, and I know that you have a written sheet there. So, if you want to also submit what you have in writing to the board, I do encourage you to do so. All right, Vice President Elliott?
Thank you. So, I want to just thank all of the speakers who spoke tonight. You know, there are people who are on one side of this issue and people on the other side of the issue. And at the end of the day, we have to look at the research that we have and make our decisions that's in the best interest of our children and families. And so, we really do appreciate the input. There's no easy decisions in this. So, but thank you all for speaking this evening. The next item on the agenda is the Advisory Council reports. And so, we have the Student Leadership Congress report and the bilingual education. And so, Anaya, if you would present for the Student Leader Congress report? Student Leadership Congress, my apologies.
Yes.
Good evening.
Hello, everyone. My name is Anaya Simmons, and I am president of Student Leadership Congress. This is the official report for Student Leadership Congress's last meeting on January 20th of 2021. On our agenda, we had introductions, a community check-in, the superintendent's form, president announcements, and sustainability measures. At this meeting, we had representatives from School Without Walls, School of the Arts, World of Inquiry, Edison Career and Technology, East Upper School, Northwest Douglas, and Northeast College High School in attendance. Students on the call expressed their lack of motivation for school. They're finding it hard to get focused in a school mindset because they are in their bedrooms. The impure motivation that they usually have is absent during virtual school. Because of this mentality, it makes days very repetitive, and this repetition leads to lack of motivation in students and a procrastinatory spirit. During this meeting, Superintendent Meyer Small was able to present some of her goals for the district, emphasizing healthy student development. In that goal, she commits to diversifying staff, tracking social and In that goal, she commits to diversifying staff, tracking social and academic process of progress of students, creating initiative-wide gender identity initiatives, implementing district anti-racism initiatives, and continuing the yearly youth risk behavioral survey. She suggested we meet with the district's finance committee to offer suggestions on how to redistribute the district's funds that got positive confirmations from the Congress. She invited us to the legislative breakfast, as well as future meetings regarding the prospective of a magnet in school. During this meeting, I talked about a lot of topics such as regions, a conference coming up, another student wellness check-in, and a spring sports committee. On the topic of regions, I reminded students who would like to opt out of them to check with their counselor for what diploma they are expected to get, and the less pressure due to college board suing discontinuation with the essay portion of the SAT and SAT subject tests coming this June. We will be looking to set up a meeting with the district's regions representative shortly. Justin Anderson of Edison and I will be facilitating the student session of the Reimagine Edison Conference, which I encourage all district students, parents, and board members to attend. The event will be taking place on January 30th, beginning at 8:30 a.m., and the student session will be taking place at 10 a.m. The Congress has agreed that another student wellness check-in would be nice, with a theme of how to transition from virtual to hybrid learning. Even if students are not switching to the hybrid model, there will be resources for them to use. The University of Rochester has agreed to partner with us to help with the wellness student, with the wellness check-in. Be on the lookout for more updates of the event forthcoming. Desiree Garrett of East Upper School and I met with Dr. Coto, and I was able to propose a spring sports committee. The spring sports committee, which consists of spring athletes meeting with key figures in the process to how to safely bring back athletes. This gives student athletes a chance to be a part of how spring sports will be brought back and increase district athlete communication. As far as we can tell, students are happy with the selection of fall two and spring sport options available. Due to Commissioner Malloy's suggestion for students to take on district-wide environmental initiatives and Global Youth Services Day coming up, the Congress discussed what we can do. The main ideas were to brainstorm was, excuse me, the main ideas we were able to brainstorm was partnering with local gardens to bring more sustainable foods to the district, and high schoolers taking time to teach kids how to upcycle the importance of composting and how to manage their environmental impact. Other, other ideas were given, were given, which students who do not have bus passes will be given bites, creating rooftop gardens and outdoor classrooms, and having a community cleanup day each semester. On the 16th, I attended a community-wide youth leadership coalition run by Kilo Lomia White of Rock the Future. This is an initiative that is supporting youth leaders from various Rochester community groups to develop new leadership abilities and provide unique opportunities for our growth. I've continued to work on a playground project in the Beechwood neighborhood with Hannah Shapie and Commissioner LeBron from Promodown Health to possibly, to possibly provide a place for schools in that area to have a social distancing rope adventure course for their gym class experience. We're asking youth in the Beechwood neighborhood, 13 and older, interested in architecture and learning leadership skills to reach out to join a committee. I, along with other World of Inquiry students, presented the Hinge Neighborhood Project on January the 17th. The presentation was to show community members what environment school-age residents would like to see in the area they go to school. Vice President Elliott, at this time, I am in support of the following resolutions. Resolution 627, asking for more funding to help give direct service over February break to the students who need extra support during this virtual learning. Resolution 633 to acquire property adjacent of the World of Inquiry School, as it would help the members of that school community have more space. Resolution 635, that would help students of schools number 3, 9, 12, and 19 utilize recreational facilities near them. And resolution 639, providing students with the services unavailable to them now, such as an emergency shelter counseling, counselor, and individual counseling, but is essential to generate happy and healthy students. On behalf of the students, thank you and have a nice day.
Thank you, Anaya. I also want to invite you to the ESA meeting. We meet once a month, so we would love if you could attend the ESA meeting if you have the time.
Yes, I will follow up with you on that.
All right, thank you very much. And the next Advisory Council Report is a bilingual education council report. I'm, I'm not sure who the person is. Is it Commissioner LeBron, or do we have a person representing the bilingual council?
We do have Angelica with us. So she will be joining, I hope I saw her on the screen previously. Angelica, are you there? I let her into the room earlier. All right, so I'm not seeing her in the room right now. Commissioner LeBron, do you have the bilingual educations report at all?
I do, but I know that her, I mean, we're going to be here. But what I will do is if we can move on to the next item, Vice President Elliott, I'm gonna call Angie and make sure she gets back on with me.
Okay, sounds good. All right, until Angie is able to come on, we'll go down to the, the next item, which is the presentation for the tentative settlement of special education class action lawsuit. And that will be done by, presented by Allison Moyer. Allison?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Allison Moyer. I'm Associate Counsel for the District, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I have several other people with me as well, as well as a PowerPoint. Kalia, are you helping me with that tonight?
And let me just welcome Mr. Feldman and Brian Heatherington. Is it someone else, Maggie? Anyone else that is joining you that I should welcome?
Yes, so I'm here tonight with Yolanda Asamla.
Hi there.
Hi, Yolanda.
I just need Kalia to, to turn my video on, no, please.
One second.
When, when, when it's time, whenever it's time, I just want you to know you, you're controlling it, Kalia.
I think we just gave you back permissions. Does?
Thank you.
Okay, there you go. All right, and I'm bringing up the presentation right now.
Thank you so much.
And also here tonight to present and help present are Maggie Robb, Jonathan Feldman, Brian Heatherington, and Carolyn Nussbaum.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We ask that in the interest of time, that all questions be held to the end of the presentation, and then we will do our best to answer any questions that you have, or be able to return shortly with the answers to your questions. We are extremely pleased tonight to announce that the tentative preliminary settlement has been reached in the Special Education Class Action Lawsuit entitled NN versus Rochester City School District. That the word NN is actually the name of the first-named student who's part of this class action lawsuit. And so while we refer to this as this, the consent decree lawsuit or the special education lawsuit, its official name is NN, so it will be forever named after that student. The proposed settlement was the, the result of years of extensive negotiation between the parties. And if I could take a brief moment, I would like to especially express our thanks to the board, Board President White, the members of the Board of Education's Special Advisory Committee to review special education programs and services, current and former attorneys with Empire Justice Center, former Board of Education Commissioner Melanie Funchess, former General Counsel Carl Christoph, and many, many members of the district's staff. Additionally, we appreciate the insight in the early work of, again, Board President White, who brought the parties together for meaningful dialogue that ultimately led to this settlement. We are grateful for everyone's commitment and everyone's efforts to assist the district to improve special education programs and services to our students. And it is the work and the collaboration of those very many individuals that have brought us here today, and we look forward to working further with Empire Justice throughout the consent decree and through the disengagement process. Next slide, please. There has been a very long history of negotiations with Empire Justice regarding special education concerns of their clients. Mr. Feldman is going to discuss those in greater detail in a few minutes. But in short, it was the Empire Justice's advocacy that led the board to convene the Special Advisory Committee back in 2018, comprised of district stakeholders to address those concerns. Those members were parents of students with disabilities, advocates in the community, community members, Empire Justice attorneys, and district staff. And they were tasked to review special education policies, practices, procedures, and programming. Ultimately, the committee authored two reports over the span of a year. Overall, 189 recommendations were made for changes to the way the district conducted special education. Next slide, please. The special committee further recommended that the district meet final disengagement goals in yearly measurable performance benchmarks in more than a dozen areas. And it further recommended that those benchmarks and goals be turned into a consent decree where the court would monitor the district and ensure compliance with what the special committee had recommended. Then, the attorneys for Empire Justice, Nixon Peabody, and district attorneys took these goals and benchmarks and negotiated for many months to reach a settlement that was based in the law, reportable to the court, and would form the foundation of a consent decree. The settlement agreement that met that, the goals and benchmarks, was finally reached in January of 2019. Next slide. Thereafter, the NN lawsuit was, was filed in the Western District Court of the United States District Court. So in the federal court, the plaintiff's complaint stated essentially that there were claims of special education violations. The district failed to provide a free and appropriate public education to students with disabilities and failed to provide their parents a meaningful opportunity to participate in the education of the children as required by law. We answered and then entered into a prolonged negotiations period, and the lawsuit was tentatively settled in October 2020. It was preliminarily approved by Judge Larimer in December, leading us to where we are now. Next slide, please. There is something called a final approval hearing that is scheduled for February 4th, 2021. This will be a Zoom and Telefonak final hearing because of COVID. In the event that any parent or guardian of a student with disability wishes to object to the terms of the settlement, which are on the district's website, that the link is here, anyone can go and look at what they are, there are very specific procedures that must be followed. And we've outlined those procedures on our website. Those procedures are also on the website of Empire Justice Center. If anyone wants any further information, we welcome them to visit our website or Empire Justice's website to read those requirements and to figure out how to attend the final hearing. Next slide, please. Provided that the court approves the settlement on February 4th, we will then enter into the last stage of the first step of the lawsuit, to enter into the consent decree. A consent decree is essentially a formal agreement to parties to resolve litigation. It's sort of like a contract. It requires a defendant to do certain things in order to obtain dismissal from a plaintiff's lawsuit. Usually what happens is the consent decree is drafted mutually by the parties, and then it's provided to the court to approve. Once approved by the court, it becomes legally binding, and it's a court order. Then, the terms of the agreement are put into place by the defendant, and the defendant's compliance is supervised by the court. Often, that involves an independent monitor or somebody appointed by the court to make sure that the certain steps and benchmarks are met. Then, after that, and everything is met, the defendant can ask to be disengaged from the consent decree. Here, Empire Justice and the district are going to ask the court to sign a consent decree that incorporates all of the terms of the settlement that we reached in October. The consent decree is going to require the district to monitor its progress on the benchmarks and goals and report on that progress to plaintiff's attorneys and the court. If the district does not meet the benchmarks and goals, the court can impose some penalties. The penalties are discussed fully in the stipulation of settlement, and I welcome everyone to review those at your leisure. But some of those penalties could include, like the imposition of an independent monitor, like I discussed a minute ago. It also could require that attorney's fees be assessed against the district to pay the attorneys for the plaintiffs. Or in the alternative, that certain metrics are met, or that other metrics are, are put into place for the district to meet. At this time, I'd like to ask Yolanda to talk about specifically the consent decree requirements that are going to be in this case, and I'll be available at the end to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Allison. So, the district has agreed to comply with its legal obligations with respect to the delivery of special education services and programs for students with disabilities, those suspected of having disabilities, and their parents and guardians. The district will address the special education problems described in the plaintiff's lawsuit by meeting specific interim performance benchmarks and final disengagement goals, mostly by the end of the 2021-2022 school year. Some of these requirements were extended to the end of the 2022-2023 school year because of the COVID-19 pandemic. The benchmarks and goals involve, as you can see on your slide, ensuring timely and compliant services for students with disabilities, achieving equity in classification and discipline of students with disabilities, increasing achievement and graduation rates of students with disabilities, increasing parental participation in the development of students' individualized education programs, and increasing the percentage of qualified special education teachers, including through the development of a strategic plan to address the lack of Spanish-speaking special education teachers. The consent decree will apply only to the claims made in the NN versus Rochester City School District lawsuit that was filed in 2019. And so it does not cover any potential claims beyond the scope of the consent decree that may have arisen after 2019. If any student, parent, or guardian or advocate has concerns over their student specialized education services, whether or not these claims are part of the lawsuit, we encourage them to contact the Department of Special Education for assistance. Next slide, please. As part of this, the district will appoint a consent decree coordinator. The coordinator will be Desiree Richmond, currently the Acting Chief of Special Education. The coordinator will supervise and coordinate all aspects of consent decree implementation, monitoring, and reporting. The consent decree coordinator will respond to complaints made about compliance with the consent decree. She will work with building staff to address the complaint. She will oversee a complaint log where calls and issues will be tracked to make sure that the issue is not systemic. The district will report annually on its progress towards meeting the benchmarks and goals, and reports will be posted on the district's website at www.rcsd.k12.org/nnvrcd. At this link, the public can also view all of the relevant documents to the consent decree, and all of those documents will stay on our website while we are under the consent decree, so that at any time, anyone can visit our website and know what is going on under the consent decree. Next slide, please. When the district achieves all of the final disengagement goals, as shown through regular reporting to Empire Justice Center and the court, and the district remains in compliance with the goals for a year after achievement is verified by the court, the district can request that the court release it from the lawsuit. If the district does not meet all of the goals, or fails to maintain compliance after achieving a goal, there are procedures for coming back into compliance, and those specific steps and procedures are outlined in the stipulation of settlement, and the stipulation in full is posted on the website. Next slide, please. So I want to thank everyone again for all of their hard work and efforts in this endeavor, and turn the presentation over to the attorneys from Empire Justice, Maggie, Jonathan, and Carolyn.
Thank you. I'll be very brief.
I'll be very brief. My name is Jonathan Feldman. I'm the Legal Director for the Empire Justice Center. And I really just wanted to take a moment for us to thank everyone involved, really so many people to thank, but we're just going to focus on the attorneys. We'd first like to thank the attorneys for the Rochester City School District, especially Allison Moyer for all of her hard work and dedication to the settlement, as well as the attorneys Carl Kristoff, Steve Carling, and Yolanda S. Moa-Wade. Thank you to all of them. We'd also like to thank the people on our team, especially Maggie Robb, who you'll hear from in a moment. She's the Lead Counsel for Empire Justice on this case, and she's done a tremendous job in pulling it all together on our side. We're also extremely grateful to Carolyn Nussbaum, who's a partner with the law firm Nixon Peabody, for all of her hard work and dedication and expertise, which has been really valuable and invaluable, really, for our efforts. I'd also like to thank Jane Gabriel, an attorney who was with Empire Justice and did a tremendous amount of work with our plaintiffs. And finally, last but not least, I'd like to thank Brian Heatherington, who many of you know, for his work on this cause over many years. And never fear, he is still here. He's still working on the case as a consultant, so thank you to Brian as well. We're very excited about the substance of the stipulation of settlement and the forthcoming consent decree, which you've already heard a bit about. There's a long history of advocacy for students with disabilities in the Rochester City School District. I'm not going to go into that right now, but we're happy to answer any specific historical questions you may have after the presentation is over. Tonight, we'll just focus our presentation on the current settlement and the lawsuit that was filed in July 2019 and the subsequent stipulation of settlement that brings us here tonight. And I'd now like to turn the presentation over to our Lead Counsel for Empire Justice, Maggie Robb.
Thank you, Jonathan, and thank you, Allison and Yolanda as well. And I just want to briefly say that I echo the expressions of gratitude that all other parties have already discussed, and I won't rehash all of that. But I just want to get started and say that in this settlement, the district has affirmed its commitment to meeting its legal obligations to students suspected of having disabilities, to delivery of special education programs and services to students with disabilities, and to the parents and guardians of those students. As the district noted, the plan to meet its obligations will be accomplished by the district by meeting a series of yearly measurable interim performance benchmarks and final disengagement goals. And the district has already summarized those benchmarks and goals for you tonight. So I'm going to speak briefly about the approach used to reach the settlement and the benefits of the settlement. This settlement is based on a collaborative approach and recommendations made by the Special Advisory Committee and included members of the community, experts in the field, district employees, and Empire Justice Center representatives. This settlement sets goals and benchmarks to measure improvements expected from implementation of recommendations in several key areas. The protracted litigation would take many more years to complete, and so all parties believe that protracted litigation would further delay any improvement in the delivery of special education programs and services to students during the ongoing litigation. This settlement will more quickly provide students with disabilities and their parents the relief that they deserve and not delay that remedy during ongoing litigation. The settlement could also possibly avoid significant financial costs to the district. As you may be aware, Empire Justice Center has agreed to waive attorney's fees as long as the district meets its obligations under the stipulation of settlement and the consent decree in a timely fashion. Next slide, please. Briefly, I would like to mention a few specific and key outcomes this settlement hopes to achieve and will benefit students with disabilities and their parents. This settlement requires the district to increase the involvement of parents of students with disabilities in the development of individualized education programs. This settlement also requires the district to ensure that students with disabilities timely receive the programs and services on their IEPs. And the settlement requires an increase in the percentage of qualified bilingual special education teachers. Next slide, please. We have talked mostly tonight about what this settlement does, and I just want to take a very brief moment to talk about what the settlement does not do. This settlement does not waive or limit any rights of any student with a disability or their parents or guardian. This settlement also does not involve issues connected to the closure of schools or remote and virtual education during the COVID-19 pandemic. Finally, we echo the district's lawyers in stressing the positive relationship that has allowed this agreement to become a reality. We were met with cooperation from the district, which showed that they clearly wanted to move forward and ensure that students with disabilities receive appropriate services. We applaud the district for the spirit of cooperation, and we look forward to continuing to work with the district to ensure that this settlement is fully implemented and that all students with disabilities in the Rochester City School District have the opportunity to succeed. Next slide, please. I thank you all for the opportunity to present here tonight, and we would all be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you for the report, and I'm looking at the participant screen. Are there any questions for the team? Commissioner LeBron?
Yes, thank you. I just have two questions. One, first and foremost, I do want to thank everyone who's worked on this. I know it's been an incredibly challenging process to navigate through, and certainly we're here because obviously we have not been doing what we are obligated by law to do. So I want to put that out there, but I do thank you all for the hard work, and hopefully, I will remain hopeful that through this process that we do get to where we need to get to to provide the services for students with special education. I don't like that it takes a court order to get there, but this has been a longstanding issue, so nothing to do with the current administration. Let me put that out there as well on record. Just two things, though, that popped up. One is, there was a consent decree coordinator to supervise some of this work, and I just wanted to understand more about how that hiring is going to go, and also, obviously, I'm assuming the district will have to pay for that, but I would like to understand who's fiscally responsible and where that money would come from in our budget. I'll stop there if you guys want to answer that first. Yes, Allison?
Sorry, it took me a minute to unmute. I can pull up the specific language from the stipulation if you give me a second, but I can preliminarily answer your question by saying the consent decree coordinator is not meant to be in a role that is exclusive of other duties of employees of the district. The stipulation was designed so that the Chief of Special Education, Executive Director, Director, or Associate Director, or other administrator with special education duties could be the coordinator. The only requirement would be that that person, who is an employee of the district currently, or someone else who the district could choose to have similar roles. So the district could hire someone outside the district, but they could also use an existing district employee. The person would just have to have the ability to supervise and coordinate or have duties such that they could put those things into place. But I could actually pull the specific language from the stipulation. Desiree, Yolanda, or Empire Justice folks, do you have anything to add on that front?
No, Allison, I think you've covered it. The coordinator needs to have sufficient skill and experience in special education, as well as be able to coordinate efforts to address the concern. So that role requires the person to have the authority and the power to make requests of district staff and to expect compliance with those requests.
Okay, I think then this then falls under the superintendent to identify who that person is, but also to ensure that it is public and we're transparent to our community around who that individual will be, so that our staff and our parents both know, just in case that there is any concerns, that that is also another individual that they can bring, some of their, share their concerns with. My second question, it has to do with, has the district identified the barriers? And I'm sorry, I wrote them down while you guys were presenting, and then I wrote really tiny, and I'm going blind, so I apologize. But has the district identified barriers that need, identified barriers to accomplish the goals that are within this consent decree? And I know that we've had a number of reports over the years around special education and the issues, but I'm just curious internally if we've identified those barriers and what the solutions are to those barriers. And I don't know if this group would have that answer at this moment. I'm okay as well with the superintendent in the future preparing an update presentation to identify how the district is going to address those barriers, but just curious as to what the barriers have been identified and the solutions to those barriers.
Are you asking for a response, Commissioner LeBron, or at another time?
I don't know if Dr. Myers can give a response or if that is a response from this group, but I think I'll put this one on the board question log.
Okay.
Kali, and I can email it to you if you'd like for the specific language. In the future, I guess I am anticipating an update from Dr. Myers to the community on what are some of those barriers and solutions to those barriers that the district is, how it's being implemented, and who the coordinator will be.
The first step, Commissioner LeBron, is this presentation needed to happen, and then the rest, as you said, as far as making it very transparent, excuse me, and clear to the community. The other thing is Desiree has begun to lean in on those barriers and challenges, and we absolutely can provide updates to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions? Thank you, everybody. We appreciate the presentation, and I'm sure there'll be questions in the future. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is the President's Report, but he's not here.
One second, Vice President. I'm sorry, I have Angelica here from our bilingual education council.
My apologies. Certainly. Angelica?
Oh, you're muted.
I'm muted, self, Angelica.
Okay, hopefully I won't get disconnected. I'm covering for Myrna. She was having issues logging in as well. I don't know what's going on with Spectrum, so. Good evening, buenas noches. I am reading this report on behalf of Myrna Gonzalez, the president of the Bilingual Education Council. Thank you for this opportunity to share some of our council activities. We are bilingual parents, community-based organizations, educators, representing and advocating for the educational rights to equality bilingual education for our students in the district. The council continues to actively advocate for equity in bilingual education in supporting the needs of our students and family during the pandemic and virtual learning. In December, due to the increased number of COVID-positive cases in our area, we canceled our November BEC meeting and also our Christmas celebration. Instead, we hosted a successful Thanksgiving basket giveaway and a coat giveaway in December and had over 20 parents drive-through. Ms. Martinez, the new Deputy Superintendent, recorded a presentation covering the December topics, and that was posted on the Bilingual Council Facebook page and emailed to our parent representatives. In January, we hosted our drive-through Three Kings event. That was also very successful. Toys were donated by the community and Nissan Vision, and food boxes were distributed thanks to Food Link. We also distributed the remainder of the coats that we had available at that time. Our parents continue to be very overwhelmed by the technology challenges, supporting their children in their classroom, in their classwork, and just managing day-to-day. They continue to express huge basic needs and great concerns over learning loss. Parents are worried about the vaccines, school reopening, safety measures, but most importantly, they are worried about the district's ability to meet the IEPs during this virtual learning period. Yesterday, Deputy Martinez had the opportunity to meet with the BEC parents and actually heard some very concrete examples of how IEPs are not being followed. So I just want to make sure I emphasize that with the previous presentation. Several schools continue to not have their Bilingual Education Council representatives as required by the BEC bylaws. It is important that each bilingual education have BEC parent representatives to help advocate for the needs of the parents and students in those schools. We also received the unfortunate news that Sandra Chevalier Blackman resigned as principal from Monroe Upper. The BEC is deeply concerned about the future of Monroe High School and the potential fallback of the progress made under Sandra's leadership. With over 250 bilingual students at the James Monroe campus, the council wants to remind the superintendent, but more specifically the Board of Education, of their responsibility to comply with the consent settlement and the BEC bylaws. The Bilingual Education Council expects to be included in the selection process of a permanent principal. In the past, the BEC has been consulted, but most recently, the BEC was not engaged in interviewing or recommending the principal position at James Monroe Lower School. Monroe has been the leading school for bilingual students, and the permanent principal needs to be highly knowledgeable in bilingual education, but also be able to engage the families in the community. Bilingual education has been unstable for many decades. The pandemic has created an even greater educational gap for our bilingual students. And Monroe was the only solid foundation that the district had for bilingual education. All thanks to Sandra's expertise and the commitment to her community, we are at a loss. We do completely understand her decision to leave the district and thank her for her commitment to our community, our students, and our family. We wish her the best, but she will be deeply missed. That concludes the report on behalf of Myrna Gonzalez. Muchas gracias, and this is the report for January. Thank you.
Thank you, Angelica. We appreciate the report. The next item on the agenda is my report, since the President is not here as Chair of the Equity and Student Achievement Committee. We had a pretty robust and exciting meeting earlier in this year, early in this month, I should say, on January 12. We talked about student attendance. We spotlighted Monroe High School, which was a very excellent report of special education transitioning planning and graduation, community schools, and data and accountability. And so we're looking forward to continuing the conversation around improving attendance and getting strategies around that and strategies for chronic absenteeism. The next ESA meeting is scheduled for February 9 at 5:30, and that concludes my report. And the next report is the Finance and Resource Allocation Committee Report. Commissioner LeBron?
Thank you. I'm going to read it from my other screen, so I apologize. I should have printed, but I don't want to waste paper on this because it goes on record. The Finance Committee report, the Finance Committee convened on Tuesday, January 19, 2021 as Committee of the Whole via Zoom video conferencing. The Finance Committee recommends the approval of the district's unaudited December 2020 financial report and the Second Quarter Change Order Report from October through December 2020. Can I ask for a motion now on those?
So moved?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Board Clerk, have you got that, Kali? Thank you. The Finance Committee discussions during The Finance Committee discussions during the December meeting focused on a variety of topics and several discussions were entertained. We reviewed the new process for resolutions, and so we, we received January and February 2020 financial resolutions. We reviewed Januaries that we'll be voting on tonight. December 2020 financial report and trend analysis. We also had a professional development presentation on the title funds and fiscal practices. A review of the financial policy recommendations and updates referenced the state monitors plan include the purchasing policy, which is policy 6700, the budget policy, which is policy number 61110, or 6110, I apologize, the new budget transfer policy, 6150, and the fund balance policy, 6500. Following the review, small slight changes to the purchasing policy, which included removing language, requiring us to do purchasing at correctional facilities. And I want to remind the board that we did agree in that meeting to write a letter as a board and urge our state legislators to look at that law in New York State and to urge them to stop that requirement for school districts to have to purchase, even if it's a nominal amount from state correction facilities. So I'm hoping to get that letter drafted within the next two weeks, and we'll circulate some draft through the board for feedback so that we can get that out to our state legislators. The policies that were agreed to move out of the committee include our new budget transfer policy, the fund balance. We moved that one to the January 26th meeting. So we moved the new budget transfer policy, the budget policy, and the purchasing policy for tonight's meeting for discussions. One thing I did miss on Tuesday, and it is under the new business, is a, some changes to our budget calendar for the 2122 budget year. And it is under new business tonight, so I will discuss it with more detail then. And that concludes my report. The next Finance Committee meeting is February 23rd, 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner LeBron. Commissioner Powell, no, excuse me, Commissioner Malloy for the governance report. Commissioner Malloy?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Let me just pull this up here. Wonderful. Yes, the Governance Committee met for the first time in the new year as a committee of the whole on Tuesday, January 5th, 2021. The topics that we discussed during the meeting included an update presentation on the commissioner onboarding process and our standards of procedures. In order to address action items listed in the state monitor's fiscal and academic plans, our district clerk, Wade, shared changes that have been made to enhance the onboarding process for our newly appointed commissioners. This process is closely aligned to policy 2510, which dictates the actions to be taken to orient new members to their role on the board. Our enhanced process now features orientation-based meetings, not just with the major departments and members of the administration within the district, but also with the board's advisory groups. As an added feature, the board orientation process now also includes definitive timelines to allow for better tracking of completion. Our next discussion focused on the board liaisons to preschool programs. As many may know, the board has a longstanding practice of assigning liaisons to the district schools. This allows for a unique relationship to be built between board members and the communities and schools that they serve. However, our preschools are traditionally not part of this process. In response to administration's identification of this gap, Commissioner Adams has now been appointed as liaison to Rochester Early Childhood Center, also known as the RISI Center. And Commissioner Powell, who is already the liaison to school number 33, will be the liaison to their preschool program. During the governance meeting, we also discussed board resources. Traditionally, the board utilizes the unabridged version of the Robert's Rules as a textbook for board meeting proceedings. However, Acting General Counsel Carleen shared that it may be more useful to refer to the in plain English version of the text. Sort of puts it all in layman's terms for us. This version is more aligned to smaller boards, such as our own, and would be an asset, in my opinion. Board members may purchase a copy for personal use or speak to board staff regarding acquiring a copy. In respect to time constraints, the discussion item on Board of Education compensation related to resolution 20056420 has been tabled to our February meeting. So we will be revisiting this topic at that time and also provide a promised update on the board polling survey device that we've been using. Our next Governance Committee meeting will be Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021 at 5:30 PM. And that concludes the governance report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. Commissioner Powell for the Policy Committee Report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Policy Committee Report for January is posted to Board Docs, but I will cover it briefly, and I'm going to take a little bit out of order. Board staff presented, provided an update on the policy manual update process. We're going to try to review all the policies in our current manual over the span of three years. And, and we're doing that through biweekly subcommittee work. The next subcommittee will meet next Wednesday. But, and it will be covering special ed policies. This, this process just began last week for the very first time. So it was kind of a fits and starts. There is no product out of those subcommittee work meetings to present to the Policy Committee as yet. In the meantime, our Acting General Counsel, Steve Carling, introduced to us the student voter registration policy, which is policy 5605, which is required by, by law now. Committee members voted to advance this proposed policy out of committee, and it will begin the three-phase process, and it is on the agenda later today under new business. Finally, Acting General Counsel Steve Carling informed us that there are no new NISBA updates. That is to say, no policies that are required of us to update because of changes in New York State law. That is a summary of our January 20, I'm sorry, of our January 5th Policy Committee meeting. Our next meeting is February 2nd at 5:30 PM, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. And before we get to the superintendent's report, Commissioner, Commissioner Adams, you had a question?
Yes, I, I just wanted to formally submit to our board question log my concern with the placement of pairs in pre-K. You know, could the district make an effort to return the pre-K pairs to their previous classes? They were teen, don't need to be trained again. And so I'm not sure what that process is or what the intention is, but could they get back to me? And so that's, that's what I want to do, formally submit that to the question log. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Commissioner Powell, you have your hand up? You have a question?
Yeah, this harkens back to the Governance Committee's report. I just wanted to ask Commissioner Malloy, being now one year into her board service, and Commissioner Clark, who is going through this onboarding now, if you could review the policy that was just described in the Governance Report, Committee Report, to see how relevant and pertinent it is and whether, having just gone through that onboarding, whether the policy itself needs updating. Ordinarily, we would put policies through the subcommittee work, but you know, policies that pertain exclusively to board service, we need to attend to ourselves. And I can think of no better people and no better time than right now to look at that, that onboarding policy.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. So on to the superintendent's reports. Dr. Myers Small?
Thank you, Vice President Elliott. Good evening to all of our commissioners, to our staff, and those who are watching on Facebook and YouTube.
I am. Second, Dr. Myers, I'm just bringing up your presentation right now.
Great, thank you. I am presenting.
Gnomes first, for some reason, I don't know.
Okay, I'm presenting. I can, I can go and then we'll catch up.
Is Dr. Gnomes' report first, Kalia?
I had it that way, but it's, it's okay. It's coming up right now.
Okay.
The other one.
So I'm providing January updates for my superintendent's report. I want to just start by saying certainly welcome back to our students. Approximately three of 300 students returned to our school buildings on January 5th as a part of Phase 1. And it's certainly hard to believe, but up until that date, I had only seen students in person at the R Centers since arriving back as Rochester superintendent. So you can certainly imagine my excitement visiting some of our students and staff on that first day and then subsequent weeks afterwards. I want, I want to thank everyone for their tremendous sacrifices, their patience, and their resiliency as we prepared for in-person learning. On that very first day, January 5th, I was able to talk with multiple students and staff in several schools, Wilson Foundation, Wilson Commencement School 28, 29, and 33. I do look forward to our next phase of our reopening plan, Phase 2, when we welcome back students in grades pre-K through 6 to hybrid in-person learning model. The pictures that are listed on my PowerPoint reflect my visits to Edison Tech and Wilson Commencement, which is my assigned school. So similar to our commissioners, who have a certain number of schools assigned to them, every executive cabinet member and central office staff member have assigned schools to them in each of the phases. I want to move now to graduation. Our graduation rate data was released last week. The New York State Education Department certified that our graduation rate for 2020 of August was 68.2%. So this reflects a 5.2 percentage point increase from 2019, which shows that our district certainly is on the right trajectory to help more students graduate, even during a senior year that was complicated with the pandemic being in a remote learning environment. The results do show an increase in graduation rates. Additionally, 80% of our high schools showed increases in graduation rates compared to August 2019. Just specific subgroup data includes an 8.1% percentage point increase for ELL students from 42.6% to 50.7%. A 7.1 percentage point increase for Black students from 62.6% to 69.7%. A 5.8 percentage point increase for economically disadvantaged students, 59.8% to 65.6%. A 4 percentage increase for Latinx students from 62.6% to 66.6%. A .9 percentage increase for students with disabilities from 47% to 47.9%. And a 39% point decrease in dropouts from 16.8% to 12.9%. I have to say that our students certainly endured an unprecedented, excuse me, school year that none of us could have expected. And this increase certainly is due to the collective work of our village in the Rochester community, so families, students, staff, teachers, and administrators. I do want to point out, however, that this data points us to key information, highlighting areas that require our specific and direct attention and enables us to focus better, how to better educate our scholars to ensure that their programmatic and their academic needs are being met. Increasing the graduation rate certainly remains our focus, and it's a priority in our strategic plan. And as we will continue to work on reducing and closing achievement gaps for our students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, English language learners, and our students of color. Next, I want to talk about my goals. I have six goals that I presented to the Board of Education through our Governance Committee meeting. There are six big goals, which include student achievement, accountability, parent and community engagement, healthy youth development, safety and discipline, and diversity, equity, and anti-racism. Under those six goals, I have a total of 36 sub-goals of actionable actions for me to, to meet or hopefully exceed during the 2021 school year. I just want to quickly just give you a few updates to, for each, one or two for each. So under student achievement, our, one of my goals was to ensure that our school, department, and district strategic plans were designed, board-reviewed, and implemented. There are 70 plans, and all 70 have been reviewed and approved, and we continue to move forward with implementation. Another goal, which President White talks about often, is to certainly make sure that the relationship between Rochester City School District and the East EPO with Dr., under Dr. Gnomes' leadership, so that relationship is strengthened. And so Dr. Gnomes and I meet monthly, and we've increased that to twice a month, starting in 2021. Our deputy superintendents, Martinez Davis and Morris, initiated meetings with Assistant Superintendent Washington, starting on January 7th. And Kathy, our chief academic officer, Dr. Black, has set up meetings with East to talk about curriculum and the academic program. Under accountability, we, I submitted a goal to develop the five-year financial plan with the CFO, Chief Financial Officer, and our state monitor that was board-reviewed and approved. That was completed, and we move forward. I'll talk about that a little bit later in the plan. Also, I wanted to establish a principal think tank with meetings to increase the relationship and the visibility with principals, even though we are in a remote environment. So we have held weekly principal meetings on Friday mornings, between a half hour and hour, and we have had 13 meetings to date, and my goal was to have at least 20. Under parent and community engagement, my goal was to strengthen relationships with major parent groups and to at least have 10 meetings. I have exceeded that goal. I work with the Parent Engagement Collective under the direction of Khadija Mohammed. I've met with the Bilingual Education Council, the BEC. I've met twice to assist with the parent engagement and plan and to hear feedback. I've met with the Pecan Group through Rock the Future. And I have biweekly meetings with Jackie Campbell from the Children's Agenda. We meet at 6:30 in the morning every, every other week, and we've had multiple meetings to date. The other goal under strengthening parent and community engagement is to increase our partnerships with higher education. I've met twice with the Brockport College Council. MCC met with myself and our deputies to look at the pipeline between the Rochester City School District and MCC. And we will, we've already held a meeting, and we plan to have additional meetings. I've met multiple times with not only Dr. Kara Finnegan, but also Dr. Manasseri from the University of Rochester. And I also participate on the Community Engagement for Racial Justice ad hoc committee, and we've met six times in the school year. Healthy youth development, as our, our student representative Anaya mentioned. One of the sub-goals under that is to conduct student forums sponsored by the superintendent or in collaboration with other groups. So I've met a few times with the students. So I've met a few times with the Student Leadership Congress. We held an event with Kim Battin, who is an Olympic medalist, and she conducted a forum with athletes. And there are multiple present opportunities that have happened at each one of our schools, particularly at the secondary level. Under safety and discipline, the comprehensive district-wide safety plan was board-reviewed. And as we all remember, we, the Board of Education unanimously approved, oh no, approved the SRO's transition from the Rochester City School District. So we have a plan that we are moving forward with to help make that transition smooth once our secondary students arrive in buildings, in schools. And then the last goal, diversity, equity, and anti-racism. We are a proud member of the MBK, or my brother's keeper, and we have implemented the grant and we have that partnership with the City of Rochester. And they hold monthly meetings to ensure that our scholars who participate from the Leadership Academy, that the things that we said that we would move forward in the grant actually happen. And just so our public knows, I will be in February reviewing with the board much more fully, those are just my goals. But I have, I have other expectations or targets to meet, and I will be meeting with the board to discuss that in February. I also want to share a racial equity update. That area certainly is a both-and situation in our district. So we have an Executive Director for Equity, Diversity, Social, Emotional Learning, and that's Elizabeth Reyes. But we also have committed as a district to ensure that racial equity is achieved in the district. So a few things I just want to highlight, Rock Restorative Team continues to provide monthly training, so book studies and PDs for staff and teachers on things like implicit bias, anti-racism, equity, social justice, et cetera. The team also meets and provides leadership opportunities to the Rock responders who serve as presenters and mentors to their peers. Over the past three years, the district has organized and facilitated close to 200 professional development opportunities, panel discussions, book talks, and conferences on implicit bias, anti-racism, equity, inclusion, et cetera. This past month alone, staff at Schools 33 and 17 have either received training, are providing training, or have initiatives that are being developed, specific to equity and anti-racism work. And then Elizabeth Reyes, who I mentioned, and Crystal Clark, the Director of Student Support Services, are chairing the task force on ensuring an inclusive caring and safe learning environment. And they are using restorative practices to promote inclusiveness in our diverse school district. They're working on also establishing training norms. So there's a lot of movement with our racial equity progress in the district. COVID-19, which is something that we always are talking about, we know that Monroe County is at about a 6.3 infection rate, and that percentage is down. Rochester City School District still is in the orange zone, whereas other places are in the yellow per New York State guidelines. And so when we're in the orange zone, you know that we must test 10% of our in-person total population every two weeks. COVID precautions and protocols are required in schools, which are masking, social distancing, COVID screening, and following the directions of the Monroe County Department of Health. Additionally, just want to talk a little bit about the COVID-19 vaccine. We know that Phase 1B includes pre-K through 12 schools. Monroe County has a website where residents can check their eligibility. And I think it's important that we are working and partnering with not only the county and the state to try and make sure that more vaccinations are available in our region. But we don't oversee or control the vaccinations, we are partnering with others to make sure that that is smoothly. So I would encourage others to continue to check the website for your eligibility and to sign up. We also have COVID-19 testing available at the following locations. The other thing that I think it's important to share is that we have heard public comment, there has been emails and other correspondence about concerns about Rochester City School District reopening in Phases 1, 2, and 3. So I sent a letter today to the Health and Safety Group of the Finger Lakes Reopening Schools Task, Safety, Safe Task, Safety Task Force, excuse me, asking for them to complete an independent audit of both our reopening plan as well as our facilities, because out of an abundance of caution and care, so someone independently would do that. That letter went to Joanne Antonasi, the District Superintendent for Monroe, too. We have asked for an expedited process for individuals locally and nationally to review our plan. So I wanted to make sure that that was an update. Hybrid and remote academic updates, that's another area that we are moving forward with. And I know that there continues to be concerns about how to do that successfully and with integrity. So the Office of Teaching and Learning, or the Department of Teaching and Learning, is working to build that teacher capacity around simultaneous instruction using best practices, not only locally but across also the country. There has been professional development that was delivered on January 13th, again on the 20th and the 27th. And so we're continuing to try and make sure that those resources are available and that our teachers feel comfortable as we move forward with Phase 2, with more students, and Phase 3. A teaching and learning update, we continue to dive very deeply into the curriculum. And so again, that work is being led by Dr. Black in the Department of Teaching and Learning in science. We have updated the toolkit to reflect the New York State Science Learning Standards and to provide access for curriculum and pacing guides relative to science. Social Studies is currently working to upgrade the district's K6 curriculum. We're also, the Department has reviewed the materials that are existing and are working to include potential resources, including Buffalo's Black Lives Matter curriculum to incorporate into our social studies curriculum. In ELA, there's been a lot of work in K6, 6, 8, and 9, 12. So there's been a heavy focus and emphasis on aligning curriculum and CFAs, which are Common Formative Assessments with the prioritized lessons in our new literacy program. And then again, in math, the K12 curriculum is being aligned to New York State standards and to address the unfinished learning during the COVID-19 period. Common assessments are currently being aligned and guidance documents are continually being developed under Dr. Black's leadership with her team. The other update, two more updates, the State Independent Monitor Plan. Dr. Jallow, as you know, works with the Rochester City School District. We specifically work with her on the academic plan and the fiscal plan. There are 55 recommendations that the Board approved for the fiscal plan and 53 recommendations for the academic plan. We are required to report to the state and commissioner quarterly, as well as have regular meetings with the New York State Department of Education. Ways that we are addressing the independent monitor plan is policy modification or creation, task force development, reviewing and modifying our current systems and structures. We work regularly with Dr. Jallow, and she participates in multiple meetings every day and week with school and district staff, as well as community members. The last, second to last item is a celebratory one, and that is to congratulate Wilson Foundation Academy. We just recently found out that under the leadership of Dr. Dejere Matthew, Wilson Foundation Academy has been authorized to offer the International Baccalaureate, or IB, Primary Years, or PYP program for students at that school in grades K3, 6. The program is for children aged 3 to 12, and it works to nurture and develop students as caring, active participants in a lifelong journey of learning through a student-centered approach to education. I have to note that when the authorization visit happened, which was not too long ago, Commissioner Adams participated with this, with the visit along with myself and Dr. Black, and that was a very positive and healthy conversation. We know that the WFA already offers the Middle Years Program for students in grades 7 and 8, and that, and it continues with Wilson Commencement in grades 9 through 10. And then Wilson Commencement Academy offers the IB Diploma Program for grades 11 and 12. So now we are able to offer a K12 IB experience for our scholars to transition from Wilson Foundation Academy to Wilson Commencement. This is a tremendous accomplishment, and we need to give major kudos to Dr. Matthew and her team for garnering this extremely prestigious designation. And this designation will allow our scholars to have a plethora of academic, social, emotional, and other opportunities commencing at a very young age. The final thing is I just want to recognize our school board. This is School Board Recognition Month, so we want to offer a special thank you to our Rochester Board of Education Commissioners. You work incredibly hard, put in countless hours in front of the scenes, behind the scenes, so we just want to say thank you. We certainly appreciate the work that you do on behalf of our, of our scholars and our staff. Vice President Elliott, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. I have a couple of hands for questions for you, Madam Superintendent. We'll start off with Commissioner Malloy.
Thank you so much, Vice President Elliott. More so than questions, just a, just a few comments, just about reopening in general. I, you know, I have to thank you, Dr. Myers Small, for just the amount of work that you and your administrative team have put in, just what you continue to do during this tumultuous time, this challenging time. And so I thank you for that work. I can only imagine the logistical nightmare that you're working through. And so I want to say thank you very much, just to, you know, preface my comments. And so I do thank you and your team. I do have a few concerns, just about the instructional aspects of our return plan for Phases 2 and 3. And just please remember that as we're getting ready for this, this return, please be cognizant of the fact that it's our educators who are bearing the brunt of this crisis, in addition to helping with, you know, their own kids' educational needs. We, as educators, we're, we're in crisis and we are, we are overwhelmed during this time. So just please remain cognizant of that. I am concerned about the survey that went out a month ago. The survey in part resulted in 70% of our families choosing remote as their preferred instructional model. And then subsequent information came out about how instruction would occur, and that has many families wishing to change their minds at this time. Just when we were offering hybrid, you know, only two days a week versus, you know, in other communities, they're able to split the kids in half and do half the kids on two days and then the other half on the other two days. So it's in regards to that. So however, you know, now that some parents have changed their minds, wanting to go now to the hybrid model or plan, I'm hearing reports that we can't accommodate these families. So we've essentially created a hybrid plan that is only accessible by half of our students. And for me, this is very inequitable, and I feel like we need to address this as soon as possible. I think we also need to consider the switch in instruction that we are asking our teachers to adopt mid-year. We are asking teachers to simultaneously teach this remote, all of our remote and hybrid students. And I understand that it's a staffing issue, but I'm, I'm concerned about teachers not having the technology that they need to make this possible so quickly, at least. So we need to make sure that we can make this a reality for, for our teachers. And then additionally, I'm also hearing reports that students in the hybrid plan are not going to be allowed to bring their Chromebooks to school on hybrid days, out of the fear that perhaps the Chromebooks will be broken in transit from home to school. And I feel like that fear cannot drive our instructional model. Students absolutely must have this access, otherwise, you know, what's the point of our one-to-one tech initiatives or efforts? So that's just my opinion, more than anything else, but I feel like we've got to make sure we're utilizing the technology that we've worked so hard to incorporate into our instruction. Finally, I also encourage the district to just remain flexible about some of the health fears expressed by our teachers and consider allowing teachers the four hours of paid time, if necessary, to travel to get the COVID vaccine. This is reflective of a push for workers statewide by Governor Cuomo, and so I just ask that we consider that for, for our own workers. I just want to express that I remain committed to high-quality and rigorous instruction across this district. And we must consider the best circumstances under which we can make this happen for our students and families. I just want to also make sure that we're working very closely between the district and East High School. I feel that perhaps East High School has accessibility that other students in the district don't have, and I just want to make sure that we can make a push for more academic equity and accessibility district-wide. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question was prompted, Madam Superintendent, by your slide that had the six focus areas, the last of them being the equity and anti-racism. I'm one, and you know, now that I'm newly appointed the Chair of the Policy Committee, I see everything through that lens. I'm wondering, have you met with the real team, or have you reconstituted it recently, since you have the authority to appoint, you know, members, both staff and community members? Have you, have you utilized the real team at all?
We're actually meeting on Monday, the 25th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m.
Well, how convenient of me to ask that question. The, one of the charges of that committee is to develop an action plan and implement Policy 201. And, you know, the work plan for the Policy Committee doesn't even come close to reviewing Policy 201, but if you were, if that were to be an agenda item, just to give it a glance over and see if it's still appropriate and comprehensive enough, I'd really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Commissioner LeBron?
Thank you, Vice President Elliott. So a couple of things, and I don't have anything of formal speech typed up, but I do have some quick notes based on your presentation. One, I, the model for teaching and learning right now, this dual, hybrid, and online, I remain concerned about the doability of that type of model. And I'm also concerned, you know, selfishly so for my fourth grader and how her teacher is going to, in person, keep her attention, and then also those of her peers on a computer screen. But more so, I'm actually going to formally request a video demonstration to this board and this community on what that model would actually look like before February 8th, so that this board can understand what we are asking our staff to do and what we are asking kids to do in a classroom. And if you need a child to volunteer, I volunteer, Sophia, who is a very difficult child for her teachers to manage. who is a very difficult child for her teachers to manage. I know because I'm at home with her every day, and I know when she's muting that screen and doing other things because I don't hear her teacher talking. But I would like a visual demonstration of that to this board before February 8th. I am concerned that there was information shared about staff's ability to take a leave of absence. I know that there were a number of passages with the CARES Act that did extend some additional privileges for those who were not able to come to work and take family medical leave because of COVID, but that, my understanding, has now expired. I don't know if our new President Biden will extend that. But I have concerns, so I would like some clarity around that. And Dr. Meyer Smalls, that clarity does not have to come tonight verbally. I actually would like to see it in writing. So with Colia, you can document that on the board log. And then I have another request for the board log tonight, just based on some of the resolutions. And I'll have some comments on some resolutions later. But I would like to understand how professional development for this district is developed, approved, the process. I know that there is a teacher center. We also offer PD. I would like that in writing to understand from the conception of it, through what the process is of implementation, offering, when an individual in our district signs up for it, how they are compensated for it, where those funds come from. And that'll be more related to something coming up later, but I know that you mentioned some PD that will be offered, and it just kind of piqued my interest to put that out there now.
Commissioner LeBron, I just had one question. When you say you want a video demonstration of a teacher teaching?
It could be a teacher teaching. It can also be Ms. Black herself, who's in charge of teaching and learning, to demonstrate to this board what that actually would look like with a student. And like I said, I'm going to volunteer one of Mr. Adams' kids. If you don't... They could be the virtual learner, and Sophia could be the in-person learner. I will bring her to the district. If you guys want to record her, that multipurpose room. But I do want a visual of what that's going to look like for a staff person to have students in the classroom, online, and ideally with the equipment that they are actually using. So I will say that, too. And while I would love for us to give all of our staff all of the equipment that they need, I don't think fiscally, we're in a position to do those purchases. So how do you manage that as well?
Hi. Just sorry to interrupt. I just want to point out that Vice President Elliott had to leave. And so the meeting chairing will move over to Commissioner Powell, as indicated by President White.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioner LeBron, are you complete through your questions?
Yes.
And Superintendent, are you satisfied you understand her concerns?
I do. I think so. I might have to... I might circle back, Commissioner LeBron.
Okay. And your report is complete, Madam Superintendent? In that case, I'll turn the floor over to our East High Superintendent, Dr. Nels. You're on mute.
I'm just thanking you all. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us to present tonight. I typically have a shorter presentation, but we've been delaying some things, and I want to take advantage of tonight and to introduce a team of folks from East who are going to walk us through the curriculum. When we presented a couple of months ago, we got quite a bit of feedback from teachers throughout R C S D, as well as throughout the region, who surprisingly watched the board meetings at night. And they were asking us to, how can we access some of the lessons and some of the curriculum? And so tonight, I'm going to have Dr. Wilson, who is our lower school principal, grade six through eight, and Quentin Mitchell, who's a lower school teacher who's been at East, I believe, now all five years at East. I think he was hired his first year at East, and going to walk through one of the lessons that we are going to have highlighted and open for folks to use on a new website that we've developed with a local technology company. So I'm going to turn over to Dr. Wilson, who will walk us through the first part of the presentation. There'll be a short video about the website, and then I'm going to end with a discussion on our graduation data for this past August. Dr. Wilson?
Great. Thank you so much, Dr. Nels, and the Board of Education for having us this evening. You can go ahead, Tom. Or is it...? Thank you so much. All right, go ahead. So I'll be speaking to you tonight about our culturally relevant and responsive pedagogy at East. As Dr. Nels has shared with you in the past, much of the work that has happened at the EPO since we came in 2015 has surrounded curriculum writing. When we arrived, there really was no curriculum available to us, and so much of our work has been spent doing that. As we continue to refine our curriculum, we are doing this through a culturally relevant and responsive pedagogical lens. Go ahead. So our process at East started with a visioning process that included the voices of all stakeholders. We then engaged the services of Dr. Sonia James Wilson, a local consultant. And with support of Dr. James Wilson, our school community has engaged in book studies, professional learning, and for both teachers and administrators. And through that work, our teacher leaders and our administrators have been giving feedback to our current units, as well as lessons delivered in the classroom. Go ahead. So the vision of CRRP at the East EPO, and it's important to define this because as you do research on culturally responsive and relevant pedagogy, you'll find different definitions. So it's important for your school community to embrace a shared vision about what CRRP is. And so for us at East, we acknowledge that students learn differently and that these differences can be connected to their unique identities. Culturally relevant and responsive teaching at East recognizes student identities. It includes gender, ability, disability, religion, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, race, ethnicity, language, and nationality, and it takes these into account to enhance teaching and learning. At East, we strive to create a school environment where all individuals are valued, cared for, and respected for their full selves. Go ahead. CRRP at East has five facets, and board members, I believe as part of your docs, your board docs, you have a copy of our CRRP analysis chart, which goes into these five facets at a deeper level, but they include relevant curriculum, responsive practices, positive social and emotional development. Go ahead. Complex and critical thinking, and empowerment, self-efficacy, and initiative. We use those facets to review our curriculum. Go ahead. That's fine. And so as we've been doing this work, and as Dr. Nels mentioned, we've heard both locally and nationally that some educators struggle with how to embed CRRP into their units. And so, as you know, we want to make our curriculum widely available, not only to Rochester, but to anybody who is interested. And so because of that, we have created a website. Go ahead. And our website will be live at the end of this month, but we want to give you just a little snippet from our web designer, Chip. So if you could play the video that we sent to you?
My name is Chip, and I am the founder and co-owner of Chip Designed It, a Rochester-based web design company. We were tasked with developing a website called Elevated Educator that will meet the needs of teachers across the country to deliver unit plans that are culturally relevant to students of color. This website is not your normal directory. It's a little bit more vibrant. However, we're going to learn how to use it appropriately. Once you land on Elevated Educator, you can go ahead right to the top-right corner of the website and type in a category, grade, or information that you're looking for in the search box. For example, math. You type in math, and you will see options for mathematics come down. If you can see a few options, but if you want to see all options, all you have to do is click Search All. Now, before we do that, we'll scroll down and see the site a little bit. Here, you'll learn a little bit about the site, just a snippet. As you read, you'll see information about educators, cultural relevancy, and pedagogy. When you scroll further down, you'll learn more about the team, the people who turned this vision into reality. First is the East staff, who developed all of these unit plans, and then there's the administrators who helped put all this together. And then we scroll further down, you'll see the spotlight. In the spotlight, you'll learn about one person or people who have been positively impacted by the unit plans in play. So when you scroll further down, you'll see the search now again. Here, you can search once again for what you're looking for, and then you'll be able to see everything that meets your criteria. Now, let's scroll back up. As we scroll up, you'll see Index. On the Index, when you click it, you'll see every single unit plan available to you. Now, instead of scrolling to infinity, what we've done is implement filters that will allow you to sort by grade, subject, and language. So for example, if we click Grade 11, and the subject is U.S. history, and then we filter by language, let's say, English, we'll find that one unit plan meets our criteria. You can read a little bit about the unit plan, and then you can click the Explore button. And when you do that, you will be sent to the unit plan's full page. At this full page, when you read a little bit about it some more, you can scroll down, and when you hover over the download unit plan, you'll be able to download the full unit plan. Upon when you get to the download page, you'll be able to download the unit plan with this button right here. And then, if you want to go back, all you have to do is click the picture. And when you click the picture, you get sent back to Elevated Educator's home site. We hope that this website meets all of your needs and surpasses them, and it was our joy and pleasure to deliver this to you. Thank you from Chip Designed It.
Great. Thank you so much for playing that video. And as we said, that will be live at the end of this month for everyone to use. I brought with me today one of our teachers, Quentin Mitchell. And so if you could just go forward, Quentin's going to take over the presentation, so you can hear from him.
Hi. Good evening. I'm just going to pull up the shared screen so I can look at that at the same time. Okay. My name is Quentin Mitchell. I am a seventh-grade social studies teacher at East Lower School. And today, I want to talk to you about how I've been able to incorporate CRRP at the unit and lesson level. Let me go to the next slide, please. So this is just a brief overview of the seventh-grade course at East Lower School, which has been evolving since I've been at East for the past six years now. So really, from a chronological perspective, we start with looking at Resistance to Colonization, which is a unit that I'm going to talk to you a little bit more on the next coming slides. And we take students through the end of the Civil War. So that's just to give you some context for what the seventh-grade course is made up of. Let me go to the next slide, please. So these are the understandings, or the big ideas, and the essential question, or the foundational question that actually drives the unit. So the two big ideas that we have for this unit are European desire to obtain and maintain political and economic power in colonial America led to the oppression of non-white people, so we really focus in on Native Americans and people of African descent. And more importantly, our second understanding, that resistance to that oppression has taken many forms and has evolved over time. So the question that we have students think about is, does history repeat itself? And if so, what does that mean for current and future generations? So really, what we're asking students is, are there these patterns to the oppression these groups face, but also the resistance they've used? And once we can acknowledge that, what should be done? What comes next? Let me go to the next slide, please. So this is going to talk about the key content and skills for this unit. So kind of like I mentioned earlier, this unit has shifted from my time as an earlier teacher till now, which I'm still young in my career, but I've gone from more of a Eurocentric view of this time period to focus more on really the oppression faced and the resistance used by Native Americans and people of African descent. So really, you can see in the content, we really look at those two patterns, beginning in colonization all the way to present time. Also at East, we use the Understanding by Design, or the UBD, model to plan our units, which really gives teachers the flexibility of being able to prioritize the content and skills that they're giving their students to serve them best. And really, a goal for us in the Social Studies Department at the Lower School, as far as skills are concerned, are really improving and sharpening students' ability to gather, use, and interpret evidence. Let me go to the next slide, please. So this is our Curriculum and Better Performance Task, which is really just a fancy way of saying a summative assessment for this unit. So Curriculum and Better Performance Task is a little bit different from other summative assessments because it gives students opportunities to practice working with the key content, these key skills, and any questions they'll be assessed on prior to starting the performance task. So typically, you would teach your content, and then once you get to the end, you'd have students do whatever you have for the project. But this just really gives them opportunities to be successful earlier in hopes that that will transfer at the back end. So again, that's still the same essential question that students would actually create their claim off of and then supply supporting evidence and analysis to support that. Let me go to the next slide, please. So what I wanted to do to kind of end the presentation is really share with you a very high-quality example of student work. There were a lot of great presentations that students made, but this was one that really kind of stuck out to me. So I just want to read a few excerpts from some of the students' work. So this student believes that history repeats itself due to the patterns of oppression faced and the patterns of resistance used by people of African descent. You can go to the next slide, please. So one of the first tasks the students had to do, all of the actual lessons that we had, the content lessons, it kind of was a piece of the puzzle. So each lesson gave students information about either the oppression that one of those groups faced or some of the strategies of resistance that they used. So this student chose to compare the conditions experienced by enslaved Africans during enslavement to the conditions experienced by African Americans during the height of segregation in this country. And the way we have students analyze that evidence is through them making that connection across time. So on the very bottom, the student wrote, "The examples are connected because they both face conditions or are very horribly treated just because they're not white and they are people of color. Slavery was 100% worse than segregation, but they both happened to people of color and have happened for the longest period of time. It took a lot of strength, dedication, and perseverance to get through those types of situations." So with this student, I really wanted to keep her original work because, as you can see as the next couple of slides, I feel like her emotion really came through with this. You can go to the next slide, please. So the next task that students had to do to balance that oppression, they also had to talk about what strategy of resistance has this group do. So this student chose to compare rebellions that were carried out by enslaved Africans during enslavement to the civil disobedience that was a defining characteristic of the Civil Rights Movement of the 1940s and 50s. So this student connected them by saying, "These situations of resistance are similar because they both did what they thought were right at the moment. Even if it ended up in them getting hurt or arrested or breaking a few laws, they knew it was for the better of the world. That's all that mattered to them. They've also done these things to show everyone else how they are better than what everyone else sees them as. Excuse me. Hopefully, a lot of other people will join in, and it will start to become international, and a change will actually begin to occur." You can go to the next slide, please. So the final part of this project, where we really had students who, they're still in seventh grade, so most of this is actually brand-new for them, but we really wanted to give them a chance to think about what kind of action can be taken to take steps to achieve equality. So not that equality will be achieved, but what will those steps look like? So I just want to read a few quick excerpts from her work. So the student said that, "I think we should try as hard as we can to overcome it, meaning that the war and the fight our ancestors did to try to make the Earth a better place for us, we should continue to fight that until we overcome it with flying colors. We shouldn't give up until that war is won, so the Earth won't be as hypocritical and as discriminated as it is. I think something should be done about the oppression. I think this because whether you like it or not, we are all human beings and should all be treated the same, no matter our differences, and not everyone is perfect. I think you should continue to use your voice and our power that we have to make sure that sooner or later, Earth will change for the better, and we should never give up. It will help African Americans a lot because then we will finally be looked at the same as non-people of color, and hopefully that will get rid of a lot of the oppression that we still face." You can go to the next slide, please. So this is just a small glimpse of some of the curriculum-writing work that I've been able to do. But there are a lot of other teachers at East who are really becoming a lot more versed in incorporating CRRP, whether it's a unit level, or whether it's a lesson level, or really just our interactions and the conversations that we have with students. So if you would like to further discuss how I've been able to incorporate CRRP or to see any other copies of instructional materials, or really to see any other examples of student work, that is my email address, and I want to say thank you for your time.
And thank you so much for sharing with us. It's so important for us to see the transfer of... And thank you so much for sharing with us, it's so important for us to see the transfer of, I'm so sorry, my children are bursting at the door to come into here right now. To see the transfer of the work that's happening in the classroom to students' real life. So I truly appreciate that, and let me mute myself and hand it over to Dr. Nels before they break down the door.
You have to see her children, they're absolutely beautiful, and they're hilarious too, they're active. So I want to first by thank, thanking Quinton for representing himself and the teachers and staff at East. He's absolutely right, part of this, part of the reason for East and U of R partnering was to truly build capacity within the staff. So no matter if U of R is there or not, the staff continues to work because it's part of the things they created. We also decided a long time ago not to buy a canned product, because there's no investment from the teacher in the creation of that. So we spent a lot of time with the board's support and assistance to create these culturally responsive and sustaining units and lessons, and just very pleased to be able to have that made available to whomever. This is, you know, this is the district's product, these are teachers' products. And our goal is to make sure that every school, every class, and every room in this country will have lessons that reflect students who sit in front of them. And this is one, this is our contribution towards that. I also want to thank Chip, the local web designer. Being someone who I would consider myself being technologically limited at times, he was very patient and really worked hard to ensure that we honored the work of the teachers. We honored the sample work of the students, and that we created a safe space for teachers to gather and learn about different ways to represent the culture that's often missing from history books. I think many have heard me say this in the past, our curriculum is our moral contract with our community. And I think it's immoral when we don't make the concerted effort to have folks of color represented within the fabric of this great society, and that includes all other individuals also. So before I let Quinton and Dr. Wilson leave, are there any questions for them? All right, seeing none, I am going to say thank you, Dr. Wilson, Phoebe Nathan, and Quinton Mitchell, have a great night.
Thank you.
Alrighty. I'm going to continue on the presentation and go into graduation rates, because at least this is the time of year when we typically do this. And I'm going to run through these data. We're going to, as we often do, we give a lot of data, we have discussions with the board after that. We'll also provide additional documents to the board if they want to go super granular in the data. So we try to kind of match the granular level of the data and also keep it big picture. So I'm going to move fast, because I think Dr. Myers and I, Smalls and I, probably took more time tonight than we were just. So the first slide is just the trajectory over time of the graduation rates. Again, I want to thank our teaching staff, our students, our parents for having faith in the curriculum and really allowing us to to kind of work it over the years. As you all know, before we came to East, the graduation rate was 29%, and you've seen a steady increase. The purple line represents the August graduation rate, so we've moved from the 33% graduation rate to 78%. This past August, and we're very happy and pleased with that, and I also want to acknowledge the University of Rochester for its support and guidance during that process. Next slide. We also quickly show the dropout rate, the dropout rate is really important, particularly when you look at 2014, 15, 2016, 17. Just to remind the board, what we discovered when we got to East is there was a practice of keeping students on the enrollment, on the roster. And that was done so that if you have, if you show a certain number of kids, then places may not put more kids into the building. And so there were a number of kids, we called ghost kids back then, I think you remember that term I kept using? There are kids who are on the books that never existed. And so we worked with the State Education Department in 2016, 17 to actually go through and do an audit of all of our students. And we found a great number of students who hadn't attended school in like three or four years, who were still on the rolls. And that's when we started partnering with some area community partners, like Need and I Bureau, to help trying to help those students transition into other parts of their adult lives, because they were, some of these kids we hadn't seen for three years. And we just really didn't want to drop them the first two years until we found them. The State Education Department worked with us on a process to give them a pathway. And I also mentioned that because often people will say, well, your graduate, your number of this student dropped, and this number of student dropped. And it's showing that, you know, there's a huge decrease. The reality is, those kids were never there. And so I think being very honest and starting with a clean baseline of data is, was very important for us. You'll see that reflected in the subsequent slides, next. Again, this is just an overview of what I just spoke to, I'll go to the next slide, Tom, just trying to save some time here. Here you'll see on the board, this is a pretty involved slide, I want to give it to you by category and subgroup. So you'll see that over the years, the number, how the demographics at East look, from all students being the far left down to ever else. Just for clarity for those listening, SWD is Students with Disabilities, ELL are English learners. ED is economically disadvantaged, and ever else are students who at some point receive services based on language. And sometimes these kids will get it for one or two years, and they'll kind of, they'll be, they're in the US long enough to no longer require those services. And so some of those students are still struggling with literacy, they know just enough to not get mandated services. We still support those kids at East as well. But you will see how that cohort data changes. And again, I draw your attention to that 17, 18 years when we actually had to clean the data. So you see some drastic changes within the data, but that's the private year where the enrollment was actually accurate in terms of kids who were actually attending. And so you see those numbers increasing in some of those categories, moving from 2017, 18 to current. It's just, it's just against a lot of data, I wanted to kind of share that with you. This is very important here, the graduation trend by accountability subgroup, so how are kids doing in the subgroup? From 14, 15 to 2019, 20, I'll just take one line, and you can actually look at the rest yourself. So for black students at East, the graduation rate was 38% in 2014, 15. Last year, the graduation rate was 85%. So that's a 47 percentage point difference between the first year at East, sorry, the year before East, and then and now. So you see it's significant across all subgroups, and I'm really excited when I get to the type of diplomas that these folks, these kids earned also. Next slide. So this is the diploma type by subgroup. So here you would see the local diploma, which we discussed at the board meeting in the past, I'm not going to go over that again. You'll also see the Regent's diplomas, you'll see the change in the type of diploma types that kids are earning also. Something I'm extremely proud of and continue to be proud about, because we're seeing that the level of standard has increased, particularly because of the curriculum that we're using. And looking at kids from grades 6 to grades 12, and building on their literacy skills and numeracy skills. You start to see the impact of kids achieving at much higher levels at the end of 12th grade. This is not what you typically see in large urban settings, you typically see the numbers skew the other way. And again, which is extremely proud, and I would say that it's the hard work of the teachers, it's the buy-in, kids, teachers, students, and parents buying in. But it really, really, really anchors and centers on our curriculum. It's a spiral curriculum from grade 6 to 12. It's consistent, if you walk into two algebra classrooms, you'll see very similar lessons. Teachers have the art and science to, you know, shake it up a little bit, but by, but for the most part, we're able to track our data meaningfully, because teachers are doing similar things. Not exact, they're not robots, but this is a curriculum they actually created as a team. So we teach our algebra lesson, it's all the algebra teachers meeting during their collaborative planning time, developing the lessons and developing assessments. And then coming back the next week and looking at the assessments and say, how did our kids do? Let's say all the kids incorrectly answered question 3. We can't say that's the kids' issue, it's a curricular issue, because everyone failed it. So we can't say all the kids don't know it, so the teacher's like, yeah, we did something different here, wrong here, we're going to catch up with this skill in the next unit. And so it is a recursive and cyclical cycle. And folks like Dr. Susan Meyer, who's the Chief Academic Officer, she put tons of time in making sure this is uniformed across the board. And individuals like Jen Reese, who is our professional development coordinator, it's all aligned. So we are going back and visiting with our teacher leaders and their admins and our staff. Next slide. The next slide is just again, another illustration of diploma type over time. And so this is what I'm saying, when you see the local diplomas in yellow and the regions in purple. You'll see from the first year where the graduation was 33%, 79% of those diplomas were Regents, 21% of those are local diplomas. You fast forward to 2019, 20, of the 78% of the 78% graduation rate, 91% of those diplomas are Regents, 9% are local. That's what you want to see, and that's more aligned with what you would see in a suburban world setting throughout the county. You see that purple, big, and the yellow, small. And again, this is just diploma type by subgroup, I've already kind of gone through this, but I want to make sure you have it in different ways, because I know we get different questions, we do this presentation every year. You'll see, I'll go back to the black category again, you'll see there was a 10% drop in local diplomas, a reliance on that, and there's been an increase. When you look at that over the course for over a five-year period with these individuals, this is the five-year snapshot of East and how the numbers have moved. Alright. And that's it, sorry I had to go fast, but I know you guys have been listening to us for about an hour now, and I didn't want to drag that out. So I appreciate it, again, we can ask more questions offline, or we can have some questions now. But I really, really, really want to tell the board, you have supported this process of professional development and curriculum development over the last five years, and you're starting to see the fruits of your labor, and I appreciate that, and so do the communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nels, you have a couple of questions. Commissioner Clark, I'll go with you first.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Dr. Nels. Pretty impressive results. I did have a question, though, I noticed that on one of the charts, the students with disabilities, it actually decreased significantly from 14, 2014, 15. I think from almost 20% to 14%. Now, is that due to a different way in which you assess the students, or what do you attribute that to, which is a good thing, but what do you attribute that to?
Well, what happened was, in the first, I tried to explain this, and I'm always respectful of the past at East, because I don't want to like make it seem like things were horrible before we got there, because it was not, it was really hardworking people doing incredible things. But what happened was, so let's say you have a capacity in your building for 1,000 students, maybe 1,000 students. And you know that 400 of those students don't come to school. And that's the, remember that dropout rate was 41%, so that's about right. So of 1,000 kids, 400 of those kids weren't coming to school, and you knew that. If I don't tell placement that these kids will be dropped, then placement is not going to put in another 400 kids, because that would put us at 1,400. So the enrollment was showing that there were 1,000 kids attending East, when in fact, there was only about 600 kids attending. I'm making, I'm just even 1,000 as a number for easy math, okay? There's only 600 kids. Well, you can imagine which kids made up the 400 who were dropped out. A large number of those kids were the ELL kids, the English learning kids, and our special education students, and our black members. So we knew those kids weren't coming, so although that percentage looks high, that suggests who the kids were on the books. And we worked with the State Education Department for the first two years, because we were at a pivotal place, and like, I don't want to drop these kids, I don't know who they are, we got to try to find them. They were hurting us on our daily attendance, we were being deemed by the state because our attendance was low, because those kids weren't showing up. And then we're being deemed by the dropout rate every year, because this mass number of kids were being dropped out yearly. And so we work with the state, and they said, we're going to clean it this year, this is your new baseline, so that means, so once we cleaned it, those numbers in 16, 17, I believe it was, those, honestly, that was probably represented, 17, 18, that was probably the data that represented where East truly was as a school. As opposed to the data before that was inflated and not accurate. And so if those in the board remember this, the first few years, we returned quite a bit of money. Because we didn't have the staff clashing, because kids weren't there. And so I didn't like overspending in the school, because there were no kids sitting there. And so when people say, oh, you graduate, your student disability number dropped, your L number dropped, your girl. I understand it on paper what that looks like, but when you walk in the building every day, and you notice we see 40% of your kids not there, it makes a difference. And I think sort of the bigger question is, why did we have that practice prior to U of R? And how do we prevent that moving forward? And I know the district has been working on that moving forward, having accredited students working on placement. So that's the percentage difference you see there, but then you also see within those categories, you see that the number of kids who are graduating in those categories has, in some cases, tripled and doubled some. Thanks. I'm happy to ask that question, because every year I have to explain it, and sometimes people don't want to accept the answer, but the answer is consistent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner LeBron?
Yep, and my response is consistent, and so I just want to say that for a number of years, both Edison and Monroe ended up with those ELL students and those special education students. And I, I didn't even want to rehash this, because it's being thrown out there like these students didn't exist. They absolutely existed, and they were absolutely transferred intentionally out of East and stuffed into Edison as we cut Edison's budget. Which is something that we've continued to do year after year as a board, so something to think about as we go into this budget cycle. And Sean, you can shut up, that's not true, I didn't interrupt you, I could have interrupted you and said that you're lying, because again, multiple times on record, I have repeated this, I have shown data as well. I just want to put it out there, we can have our district present those same numbers when East is dropping in those populations, where those students went on record in other schools. I can, I can have administration pull that data up for this board and community to see. I didn't raise my hand to argue and go back and forth, though. What I want to do in the future is make a request for this type of presentation to be done in the ESA committee. Although I appreciate that this is how we've always done these types of presentations in the past, in the board business meeting. We reenacted and we brought out the ESA committee for this purpose, intentionally to look at data and have the opportunity to have really focused, more in-depth conversations about teaching and learning, the data, the models. And so I'm making that request tonight, and Commissioner Vice President Elliott, this falls on you as the chair, but I'm asking my colleagues to also consider that this type of in-depth conversation transfers over to the ESA committee. And the other and final request is that I also in the future want to see raw data in terms of numbers versus the percentages, so that I also have an understanding year-to-year comparison, what those percentages means. Because I do know that, you know, and sometimes the raw data also tells a different story in terms of actual numbers versus the percentages. With that, I'm done.
All right, thank you, Commissioner LeBron, Commissioner Malloy?
Thank you, Vice President Elliott. Yeah, I just wanted to request, and this isn't, this isn't so much of a request of Dr. Nels, but more the district as a whole. I would like to have the ability just to look at such data. I need a side-by-side comparison of all of our schools broken down in the way that I saw the East information broken down. So if that's something, I don't know if we can put that on the question log, but I'm a visual person, I need to see it broken down in that way, by school. The way that we were presented this evening, and yes, perhaps that is a conversation for the ESA committee, but I would like to see the data presented in that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy, Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Commissioner LeBron asked you, Madam Chair, to facilitate, moderate, negotiate whatever her question. So I'll just put this out for consideration. This section of our agenda is the superintendent's report. Now, the board can frequently demand or require that the superintendent covers certain information in their presentations. But I don't think that there's any condition under which the board would direct superintendents what not to cover in their presentations. And if they want to talk about graduation rates, then that is absolutely their prerogative. I can't think of a single instance where a board would direct their superintendents what not to talk about in their reports.
Well, we can, let me just say, Commissioner Powell, we can also have it in the ESA committee as well. I think to Commissioner LeBron's point, when you're doing it in a forum like this, you don't get a chance to get into the real details. The committee structure allows that to happen, so I'd be happy, and Dr. Nels, if you don't have a problem with presenting at the ESA meeting, we'll do that, so. But thank you so much, Dr. Nels, thank you so much, Dr. Myers Small. We will now, oh, I want to just put in a plug, I forgot to mention that I had met with Franklin Upper and Lower Schools. Two of the schools that I've visited via Zoom, and just want to give them a shout-out, and looking forward to, I'm also interested in inviting them to one of the ESA meetings somewhere, sometime in the future. But just want to give them a shout-out and let them know that the board is truly in support of the work that they're doing. And to advocate for them and, you know... you know, what they need in order to increase academic achievement. So that's just a shout out for both of those schools over there, Rick Smith and Ms. Harris over there. So. And with that, we will get to the consideration of resolutions. First resolutions is HR resolutions, resolution six oh one to six fifty. Can I get a motion?
I'm sorry, Vice President Elliott, before we continue, I just want to make a note that six oh seven, six oh nine, six twenty one and six twenty two were added after the forty eight hour packet was sent out. And I, you know, I, I'm juggling a lot of things as we all are with work and family and, and I do try to print the forty eight hour packet, review it. But when I went into my email this morning, there was an email sent out last night that there were some changes to the resolutions. So I had to print that additional packet and then compare those changes. And I just want to remind the administration to remind, well, Dr. Myers, I'm reminding you to remind your team that we have a process in place for a reason, but the board really should not be getting resolutions after the forty eight hour timeline. And I just ask respectfully that you guys consider that because I've created my own system on how to review these things. And, you know, I was trying to juggle this today in between other board meetings and meetings I had today. Thank you.
Yeah. Dr. Myers, would you like to respond to that?
Our apologies. Absolutely. Commissioner LeBron is absolutely right. Our apologies.
So it won't happen again. Dr. Small? It won't happen again?
Eric, I'm being, what had happened was.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Yeah, let's not have that happen again. Please.
So I have, I have a quick question, Vice President. You, you named six oh one through six fifty. That's.
Correct myself on that. Yeah, thank you. So the resolutions, the HR resolutions is six oh one to six twenty eight. Am I correct on that? Callia, can I get a motion for those?
Yeah.
Motion. Can I get a second? Okay. Now, is this the point I say all in favor or do I ask a question?
Can you just, can you restate? Can you restate for me what, how, how far the block goes in?
Six oh one to six twenty eight.
All of the personnel. Okay.
Yes.
And who's, I'm sorry, there was, everyone was talking on top of each other. So it blanked out for me.
Who made the motion?
I motioned.
Second?
I did.
Okay. So is this where I ask all in favor or do I ask for the questions first?
Questions.
Ask for conversation about.
Yeah, yeah. Any questions, comments about that block of resolutions?
Yes.
Commissioner LeBron?
So since you did a large block and I motioned it and I accepted it, I just have a question on number six oh eight. I just need clarification on the language contract substitute. I don't know if I've actually seen that type of language before. I know long-term substitute, but I don't know if that's what was meant with that one. Chris, is that something you can respond to, please?
Sure. Yeah, these are substitutes that are hired. We have up to twenty five of them that are hired to work in our schools to fill positions through the PDSU contract.
The, okay, can you spell out what PDSU means? Because again, I'm just trying to understand if the, if it's a long-term substitute teacher. I don't, I guess I'm not understanding what a contract sub is versus a long-term sub.
Yeah. So they're, they're hired to finish out the year. So these individuals will start per the dates that, that are indicated, one in March and one in January, and they will finish out the year.
Okay. And then my second question is related to six twenty one and six twenty two. It's actually just a request on when we're recalling individuals, if we can also put the salaries, create an additional line to have the salaries for those who are being recalled as well. Because when we, you know, are hiring positions, we do present in our resolutions, the salaries that individuals are making. But I'm not going to remember that someone was hired ten years ago and they were laid off and now they're being recalled and what their salary was from back then. So if we can just have that visual, also give us an idea of what we're spending, I would appreciate it. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, I made a mistake. So Steve, I'm going to need you to help me with this. That, that packet should have been six oh one to six twenty one. Because the, the next section of those resolutions are additional pay. Can I ask for an amendment here? How do I have, how do I do that? Or do I not do it since I already have a motion?
Before we do anything, I think it might be six twenty two. Because that's, that's the end of the line for.
Oh, okay.
HR, then it goes.
My opinion.
So. Under, since.
If we can't do it, don't worry about it. I'll just vote yes this time for additional resolution.
We can.
Yeah, but you know, that's not what I.
We can do it against.
Or can we?
You can just say, hearing no objection.
Yep.
Hearing no objection. We will amend the, the motion to be only for six oh one to six twenty two.
Okay.
Unless anybody objects, we'll move forward that.
All right. Any objections to that? My apologies. And I didn't see the six twenty two because I had my page stapled and it's at the top. Okay. So all in favor of resolutions six oh one to six twenty two?
Aye.
Aye.
Any?
I have one nay for six oh one. And I just want to put on record again that I'm not voting for anyone to be tenured during a pandemic. And so it's not anything against these individuals who are eligible and qualified. And I do not want any of them to take it personal. I just have taken the principle of not voting on any tenures during resolution. So yay for the, all of them except nay to six oh one.
Thank you, Commissioner LeBron. Commissioner Adams, were you? Did you have any no votes? Commissioner Adams?
Okay, I need, I need to have them on screen for the, for the vote. Thank you, Commissioner Adams.
Okay, we're all set?
I think you're speaking, you're muted, Commissioner Adams.
You're muted.
Yeah. So there was a.
He's still muted.
And?
And he froze.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I totally missed what was going on. An emergency happened at the center at my job. And I had to respond. Was it you needed me to do? To vote on something?
Yes. Vote on resolution six oh one to six twenty two.
You muted again. I'm sorry.
Unmute again, Commissioner.
Aye.
Got it?
Yeah.
All right. Can we consider, can I get a motion for resolution six twenty six through six twenty eight?
I'll move.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I'm a no to those?
I'm gonna say aye, but Commissioner Vice President Elliott, can you also open the floor for questions?
Thank you. You know, I don't do this but once or twice a year.
I know. It's okay. I didn't have any questions on these. I asked it earlier.
Thank you. Any questions? I'm sorry. All right. So can I get a motion for resolution six twenty nine? That's the special education programs recommendations.
Motion.
Wait, I just want to make sure that six twenty six to twenty eight passed then? Because we did discussion backwards.
Yes, it passed. It was.
Okay.
Y'all slow me down if I did. All right. So we got a motion and a second for resolution six twenty nine? Any questions on that? All, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
And I'm in favor. Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion for resolutions? Six thirty, well, here's, here's one question. If you, I'm looking on the business sheet in the six thirty to six thirty five, then five fifty eight. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Six thirty to six thirty five, and then there's a five fifty eight.
Let me double check that. I believe it actually just goes to six thirty five. Five fifty eight should not be there. That's, that's my mistake.
All right. So a motion for resolutions six thirty through six thirty five.
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any question on those resolutions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'm in favor. Thank you. We have the last resolution, six thirty six through six fifty. Can I get a motion for these resolutions?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Any questions on those resolutions?
I had a couple of questions, one on six thirty eight and the other on six forty one. And I, on six thirty eight, it indicates that we're going to be working with eighty four students to better manage their classroom behavior. I was just wondering what, what type of work is done there and how, how much success we have had in, in accomplishing that goal.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Clark. The request for six thirty eight is for us to provide federal flow-through funds for this educational program that's being held at Hillside. So we are a flow-through agency for Hillside. And also we are making sure that we're providing this information, I'm sorry, the funding for eighty four students that are at the Andrew, Andrew Treyhee Campus School. And this is working to improve the delivery of their instruction and manage the classroom behaviors, et cetera. But once again, because we are a flow-through agency, we're providing that information. I mean, that, that, I don't know why I keep saying the word information. We're providing that funding to the agency because of our role as the LEA, that is the flow-through agent for that funds. And also I see Paul is on too. So I'm not sure if you want to give additional information, but I think that's basically the, the reason why we are providing the procurement for that funds for that agency.
Okay, but understanding there are federal flow-through dollars, that, that answers my question. And the other was resolution six forty two, the, the Bank Street Principal Preparation Program. And that was resolution six forty two.
Okay, I'm going to defer to my colleague, Dr. Green, to answer that question.
Good evening, Commissioners. So we have a partnership with Bank Street through New York City State Ed. It's a P twenty grant. And this, this process has been flowing through since last year. We did a resolution early in the year for the first part of the funding. The funding for the second half of the year just came through. So we're continuing with that work. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Commissioner LeBron, you have a question?
Yes, I just want to highlight that in our financial previews for resolution number six thirty six, that Dr. Jallow has recommended that there is a little bit greater details in this particular resolution in terms of the way that it reads. It's very general, so approximately eighteen thousand students. And I'll share, I'll try to quote her as best as I can. She said, it looks like everybody in the district, every teacher, every student will get these services. But then how do you measure those outcomes? And how do you know which schools these will be at? So although I'm going to support this tonight, I just wanted to uplift the fact that this type of resolution should have greater details as to the number of students, what schools, the number of staff in each schools, and how we will measure the outcomes of success for these programs.
To Dr. Jallow, hearing. Anything else, Commissioner LeBron?
No, that was it. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Adams?
So I just needed to, I need to go. I'm a frontline worker. I need to go to the frontline. I'm sorry. I guess you'll have a call, but I have to go.
All right. Have a good night, Commissioner Adams.
Tonight, Ms. Adams.
So can all in, any other questions with regard to resolutions six thirty six through six fifty? Having none, can I get them all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'm an aye. So that concludes voting on the resolutions. We have no unfinished business. And under new business, Commissioner LeBron, you want to talk about the budget calendar update?
I do, but I see Commissioner Malloy has her hand up. And I think that's because we have some gift acceptance resolutions and she totally acknowledges those individuals. Commissioner Malloy, before I turn over the mic, I just want to thank Mr. Paul Burke for being here tonight from Oasis to answer any questions. And always uplifting Oasis and the work that they do. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Malloy?
Great. Thank you so much. I just want to extend thanks as part of some of the resolutions that we just approved for some of the gifts that our district has so generously received. Want to say thank you very much to the Hillside Children's Center. Want to also say thank you to, sorry, I'm out of order here. My bad. I was so prepared. Here we go. Also wanted to say thank you to the Scott Pino Foundation. They donated five hundred children's winter coats that were valued at ten thousand dollars to be, to be distributed to R C S D elementary school students. Thank you so much for that. And also the, as a social studies teacher, I have to say thank you to Bob Abrams, who donated eighteen hundred Peters projection maps to the district. And thank you very much to GMR Associates for their generous donation for use of, to help fund field trips and cooking in our schools. As well as, would like to thank Illuminating Expressions for a gift that was valued at over a hundred thousand dollars for different materials that will be distributed to our families and students. And as well as Action for Education Equity. And I'm sure I've missed some of the other generous donations that I want to say thank you to everyone.
You're muted, Vice President Elliott.
I got a telephone call. So Commissioner LeBron, if you'd like to talk about the budget calendar update?
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate how you're moving things along tonight. So a couple of things that came up in accordance to state legislation. We do have to get a presentation from Dr. Jallow on our budget. So there's a couple of new dates that were added. One, we have to, in accordance with state legislation, give our budget by Monday, March first to the state monitor for her to review. So it does change our process just a little tiny bit, but really internally, that budget has to be given to the state monitor. And then Tuesday, March sixteenth, we've extended that day in terms of the presentations. So it'll include, include the district and the East EPO presenting the budget to the Board of Elections that can overview. And then the state monitor's presentation to the board in special meeting prior to the finance committee. So I just want to put that out there. I think those are the two additional dates that we added. We're still waiting. Oh, Thursday, April first, deadline to provide the proposed budget, the state monitor's finding and any budget amendments to the public via the district's website. So also according to the state legislation, we have to, aside from our normal public hearings, we do have to make sure that the public has access to any of the recommendations and feedback that we are also getting from the state monitor has to be made public. So we've added that for Thursday, April first as the deadline and then make sure that it is published before the public hearing. But I want to note that we're still waiting on the dates from the city as well, which is on there as a draft, a TBD at this point.
Could I ask, could I ask that the calendar be put back up again? Commissioner LeBron, you said it would be posted before the public hearing. We usually have two public hearings, correct?
Yeah. So there's usually. Yeah, so there's usually, well, yes, your past practices have been to have two public hearings.
We have, if you want me to jump in on that one?
Yeah, Kali, go ahead, because...
So when, last budget season, we looked at the traditional way of presenting the public hearing, and the overwhelming response from the public is that they wanted an event where there could be interactive kind of debate or discussion or learning on the budget. And so with last year's budget, we did a budget webinar. Well, it was a budget workshop at the time, because it wasn't COVID. COVID hit right in the middle of budget season, so we were able to have a budget, do you recall, a budget workshop at East EPO in their collaboratorium, where we were able to facilitate question-and-answer responses, kind of talk to the public about what the budget looks like, what kinds of things we were prioritizing, and that kind of thing. And that's usually earlier on in the budget season, because it allows the public to kind of go on the ride with us. So that date for the public is actually Wednesday, February twenty-fourth. There is the Public Budget Webinar. We had to make it virtual this year because of COVID, but we will be facilitating that as, in replace of one of the public hearings. And then we have the traditional public hearing, which we have to have as per, or budget policy, we have to have at least one public budget hearing. So that is April eighth, and that's the date that we use to go in accordance with the legislation to provide all the materials to the public. That one is more traditional, and people would just be speaking and addressing the board on their reactions to the budget.
Right, I did pull up the budget hearing policy just to make sure that we were complying with that policy. I do note that the policy states that we reserve two minutes per speaker, which is peculiar, because our standard for speakers is three minutes. And if anyone wants to give me private feedback on that so that I can, that we can potentially update that policy during the review, I'd appreciate it. And the policy does only require one public hearing, although we have done it in multiple in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell, Commissioner Malloy?
Yes, thank you. I'm so sorry, I forgot to thank one of our largest donors, so apologies to the community. I want to thank the Rochester Area Community Foundation for establishing the COVID Education Fund. And it was through generous donations to this fund that we're able to provide better access in terms of high-speed internet to our students. So I just want to say thank you to Avangrid for their ten thousand dollars donation. ESL Federal Credit Union, they're matching, they're making a dollar-to-dollar match up to three hundred sixty thousand dollars on our behalf. And also, the Maxon Marion Farish Charitable Foundation for their very generous donation, as well as the United Way of Greater Rochester. Thank you for helping our students gain access, much-needed access during this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. And the next item under new business is...
One question, I'm sorry, before you move on. We do need a motion to amend the budget, the budget calendar, because we adopted it on October twenty-second, and now there have been changes that have to really, we need to use to move forward.
On motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay? All right, unanimous, except for Commissioner Adams. Okay, all right. So now, onto the discussion items are board policies, budget policy, new budget transfer policy, and student voter registration policy. Commissioner Powell, you want to say anything about these policies?
Well, the two budget policies were under the guise of the committee. I do have something to say about the last one when we get there.
Yeah, so, thank you. I'm going to start with the budget policy. And I don't know, Kali, if you want to pull it up. Do you have it up? Let's see, that is policy...
Sorry about that. Do you want me to pull up the redlined version or the clean version to that?
I would ask the board, I don't know what you guys would like to pull up, so...
I can pull up the redlined version, it might help, it could, to understand the changes.
And while she's pulling that up, I'll just, again, remind that in purchasing policy, the only changes that were uplifted were originally from Commissioner Vice President Elliott, who saw that line in there around the corrections facility. And so we're going to remove that language, but I want to acknowledge that it is part of New York State law. So it is, to some degree, we're just removing it from our policy, but the big ask will be for us as a body to really push our state legislators to review that law and remove that law, or make changes to it, so that no school district in the state of New York has to make purchases from correctional facilities using education dollars. And when we talk school to prison pipeline, to me, that's a perfect example.
Commissioner, I don't know if Commissioner Clark was to react to what you...
Yeah, I see his hand up.
Right, yeah. Yeah, my question is, can we remove it if it's part of the state law at this point in time? Or do we need to advocate to the state first to get it removed in order to take it out of our policy? Because it seems like we'll be out of compliance with state laws if we take it out beforehand.
Yeah, so my recommendation is going to be to remove it. And we had this discussion in financial previews. And I want to recognize that we may be in compliance, and that would be a fight that I would absolutely take up with the state. And again, I think we can advocate for it, but we don't have all of the laws within our policy anyway. And so my understanding is that our staff actually tries their very best to minimize any purchases from correctional facilities as it is, and that we've gone years sometimes without making any purchases. I just don't think it's language that needs to be in the policy and encouraging our staff to do so. Although I want to acknowledge that they themselves have said that they have, there are years that will go by where they don't make any purchases from correctional facilities. But I do think it needs to be a twofold, removed from our actual policy and writing, and a big push to the state. And I think it's one of those laws, Mr. Clark, that was probably, because I don't know how long it's been there. That, you know, our own policy was written years ago, and the language was just taken and put embedded in there, but perhaps forgotten. And in 2021, I think with our new state legislators that are there, that this would be the time to uplift this and advocate for removal, and that we would have the support. But I see Commissioner, I don't know if that answered your question, Mr. Clark, but if you have more questions, you can feel free to raise your hand. But I see Commissioner Powell has her hand up.
Go ahead, Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. I thought that Commissioner Clark's question was really valid, and I'd like to hear what legal counsel has to say about it. If there's a way to reframe the policy altogether so that it does not recite that portion of the law, but leaves it, you know, obscure, that might be the way around, but I'd kind of like to hear from our legal counsel.
Yeah, we don't have to have every law incorporated in our policies. That is true. Commissioner LeBron was accurate in that. In fact, we don't in a lot of cases. We still have to abide by those laws, as long as they're valid laws on the books, but we don't have them in the policies. I guess I would maybe feel a little more comfortable if at the end of this, instead, it just said, "or any other legally required procurement," something like that. That kind of leaves it, you know, a little bit more open. But at the same time, if our, as long as we're not directing people not to do this, then, you know, we're within the confines of the law. So if the policy had been written to say procurement shall not be made from state correctional institutions, we would have a problem. In this case, as long as the finance team is following the law, we won't be out of compliance. But this is a bit of a closed list. So I think, let me just read it over again really quick.
While you're doing that, I follow what your suggestion is. I wonder if we could push this policy back for another review and with the consideration of eliminating this six-point bullet list entirely and replace it with a generic reference to state purchasing laws?
If that's what the, if that's what somebody is suggesting as an amendment, you certainly can put a motion on the floor.
Let me say, let me say this, because I'm the one that sort of had some concerns about it. You know, we have these people in the prison system who are making these products, it's almost as if it's slavery. And that's what this whole prison system is about, to be able, and they're making a ton of money, the powers that be, in these, you know, private prison correctional institutions. It's an ethical issue for me that the district would purchase products from an institution that has, in my mind, slave labor to do this work. And it's not, you know, competitive salaries or wages that these inmates are getting. So for me, it's an ethical issue, that we not purchase any products from the correctional facilities due to that reason.
I'm sure, I'm totally sympathetic to your position, and I agree with it. I'm trying to find a way to thread the needle so that we can honor that vantage point without calling undue attention to, you know, to kind of, not skirting of the law, but downplaying the requirements of the law. The law specifies that this is a choice they're encouraging us to make for, whether it's for fiscal reasons or otherwise. We can say, "Yeah, yeah, that's what the law says," and, you know, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna, like, put great emphasis on it by including it in our purchasing policy.
Vice President Elliott, I just want to, again, uplift and remind, I mean, I talked about this on Tuesday as well, that we, again, don't need to have laws written word-for-word in our policy, but also, you know, we don't have to encourage individuals. I'm sure that the Finance Department and Purchasing knows the laws and knows, you know, how to circumvent or follow them, or whatever the case may be. But what I will also say, that New York State requires the, not just for our district, that is a requirement for all districts in the state of New York, to purchase from state correctional facilities. So they own these correctional facilities. And I do agree, we're talking about people who are locked up, often primarily Black and Brown people, for long sentences, for very petty crimes, right? That we don't see counterparts face the same type of harsh treatment. And, you know, just, I'm with you too on the ethical, but also, this is a social injustice that school districts are being required to make purchases with educational dollars for New York State ran correctional facilities. They own, they own these as well. So all I will say is that we can remove that one line, that was my recommendation before. The law is still the law. Again, our internal finance individuals know what they need to do and how to make purchases, and I'm not in the weeds with them, and I'm not going to ask them to do anything different than what they normally would do and have been doing day-to-day in terms of purchasing. But that we, as a board, take this cause and also ask other boards in the state of New York to join us in this, in this fight to remove this. That's it.
Steve, I see you have your hand up.
Let me backtrack a bit, just given where this falls. If this is the only line you're trying to take out, which is number five in this particular block, the only thing that this says is that if we're going to seek quotes, we don't need to seek alternative quotes if we're buying from a state correctional institution. So if you want to take it out, I've actually, having reread it a couple times, that's fine. Because this simply states that we don't have to seek alternatives. It doesn't say that you can or cannot be looking to the state correctional institutions. So that, it's one of several things that we don't have to go through our normal purchasing protocols if we're doing that. And that's why it would be listed like this, but I don't think it encourages or discourages in any manner. So if you want to take it out as a matter of principle, that's fine. If it comes to the point where the district determines the only place they can get something is from a state correctional institution, they can still buy it, and they don't have to seek an alternative quote. That's all it means. So I'd be comfortable if you want to take it out without having to go back to committee after considering the way it's written. It's different than the way it was, I was interpreting in the first instance.
Commissioner Powell?
I'm very comfortable with his explanation, and therefore, I'm content to have it move forward as recommended out of committee. We don't vote on it this month anyway, we vote on it next month. But I'm pleased that we're having conversation, because getting this kind of clarity is what we need to be doing when we do our policy reviews.
Thank you. Any other questions about the budget policy? Sixty-one, ten?
That was the purchasing policy. We didn't look at the budget policy yet.
Okay, so I don't have the purchasing policy on my...
No, we re-added it because of...
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Powell, you have one question?
No, I think I just didn't have my hand down. There you go.
Commissioner Polly, I mean, Commissioner LeBron, do you want to take the budget changes or anything like that? Or do you want to leave the rest of them as is?
So I'm comfortable where this is at. I don't know where my colleagues are at with it. So this is the budget policy, sixty-one, ten, Vice President Elliott.
Okay. So the purchasing policy, we're clear on that, right? We're okay with that. Okay, all right, thank you.
But that won't be voted on until next month.
Yes, understood.
Get out of, you know, committee for tonight.
And there's no comments for the budget policy, sixty-one, ten? We're all done with that as well, correct?
Okay, so, yes. And now we are on sixty-one fifty.
Okay.
And all of these policies that we're discussing tonight, I just want to let the public know. We have sent them out via email multiple times. We've reviewed them through the finance committees, and we've had some discussions, but we're just formalizing the process of having removed them out of the committee process and out of emails, so that we can have finalized these conversations on these policies now, so that they can be ready to be voted on.
Okay, any questions on budget transfer policy? Commissioner Powell?
Yeah, I would only note that the changes that are being recommended here, the transfers report that we saw this month for the first time, what those items would have, would have occurred, a board resolution requirement based on this language. So, you know, if the same, if the same transfer had happened after we said yes to this policy, it would have generated a little bit more work for the administration. Just an observation.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to say, this is, we don't have this policy in place. So this is a new policy, and this was worked on in collaboration with the administration to finalize the number that was comfortable for both. We do get the monthly reports with details about these things, but we still needed a process. There are other school districts, when they're moving large sums, they, their board is... There are other school districts, when they're moving large sums, they, their board is required to vote on it. And understand that there was a budget that was passed. And that there's going to be a large sum of money transferred to another budget line away from the original budget that was passed. And this will give us more clarity and transparency as a board.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner LeBron. Commissioner Powell, you want to talk about the student voter registration policy?
Um, yes. Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, you have that coming up? Steve could point to the particulars. My only concern about this being at the discussion stage right now is that unlike the, unlike the financial policies we just covered. This particular one really does require superintendent's regulations to properly implement. And we talked about, you know, who, you know, who, what, where, when would this, would this activity of registering? Or pre-registering sixteen and sixteen, seventeen, eighteen year olds. And so my, my question to the superintendent is, while we're waiting for the policy to come up is. Have, have you given any consideration to the regulations?
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I've spoken with Steve and he has communicated with both. Not only Dr. Morris, but, and Dr. Black and Ryan, who oversees social studies. And they were going to work on putting something together. So we could present that back to the board to just take a look at the regulation or the guidelines. Yes.
Okay. Generally speaking, the, the, the regulations are entirely yours, Madam Superintendent. That's, that's your purview. The board can do, and I would recommend do, do in this case is, is. Vote on the, the policy once we see that there are regulations to support it. Would you be able to have language by our next business meeting, next month's business meeting?
Yes, that's feasible.
Yeah, the, I, the, the version that was being shown ever so briefly didn't take out the NISBA's suggestions and notes. So we really don't have the cleanest.
Sorry, I'm, I'm trying to locate the, the correct one. I don't, I'm having trouble with the, with the sharing. I'm sorry, give me, continue to talk about it, but.
For our viewing audience and staff who might be on the call. This essentially, the essence of this is that state law now allows for pre-registering our students before they reach the age of eighteen. And it calls upon school districts to facilitate getting kids registered to vote. So in order to make it happen, we have, we have to have a policy. And in order to have a policy, we, we need a, we need to understand what the superintendent's vision is for implementing, implementing that policy. But the, the bottom line is it's something we all endorse doing. I think it's a good idea and helpful in developing civic education.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. So that ends the new business. And so we are about to go into executive session. And this is the last item on the agenda before we come back out of the executive session to do our board survey. So at this point, I will say good night on behalf of the board. Because there's no other business that we will be conducting other than the board survey when we come out of the meeting. And so have a good evening, join us again next week. And so I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session for the matters of dealing with a pending litigation. And also a collective bargaining matter. Can I get a motion? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Good night, everybody. Thank you for joining us.